Good evening and welcome to Coburg Council's session for Monday, January 27. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And to Deputy Mayor, are there any agenda additions?
Yes, Your Worship, there are four agenda additions this evening. Number one is a delegation from Troy Mills, Coburg residents regarding a door-to-door service for accessible transit in the town of Coburg. Number two is a delegation from Keith Oliver for the Coburg Fitness Park Working Group regarding the proposed fitness park. Number three is a delegation from Lynn Taylor, Gwen Barnes, and Miriam Mouton, Family Council Golden Plough Lodge regarding stretcher transportation services. And four, a memo from the Municipal Clerk, Manager of Legislative Services regarding the Court Security and Prisoner Transportation (CSPT) program agreement. The action recommended that the matters be added to the agenda.
Discussion of members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Are there any disclosure of canary interests from members of council? Seeing none, I'd like to proceed to the clerk.
Next, Your Worship, we have presentations, and we have Kelly Martel of MHBC Planning to provide an update to council on the progress of the development of the Affordable and Rental Housing Community Improvement Plan, CIP, for the town of Coburg.
Kelly, welcome to our chambers, and we certainly look forward to the presentation. And the diocese is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Henderson and members of council. My name is Kelly Martel. I'm an associate with MHBC Planning, and we have been retained by the town in conjunction with SHS Consulting to complete a study to develop an Affordable and Rental Housing Community Improvement Plan, otherwise known as the CIP. And I'm here tonight to update you on the work done to date as a part of the study and outline next steps involved with the project. I understand that many members of council were at the open house that was held last Thursday, January 23rd, and so the intent of tonight is not to delve too, too deep into the details of the presentation that was given, but to provide more of a high-level overview of the findings to date and review next steps moving forward on this project. So quickly, by way of background to set the context, the Community Improvement Plan, or CIP, is a plan that sets a framework for revitalization, redevelopment, and renewal of an area with programs to help make those improvements happen. Under the Planning Act, municipalities identify areas and policies for CIPs in their official plan. As part of the county's affordable housing strategy, it was recommended that member municipalities implement CIPs at the local level to address the provision of affordable housing through development incentives. And additionally, Town Council has identified the need to address affordable housing and rental housing, and this is the focus of the CIP that we're working on now. And as part of the CIP, we do intend to incorporate other elements such as sustainability, brownfield revitalization, and accessibility to ensure we approach affordable housing in a comprehensive manner. So quickly to review our work program, we were retained by the town in September of 2019, and we proposed a three-phase iterative work program with touchpoints to council and opportunities for community engagement throughout. And we also have the benefit of the Planning and Development Advisory Committee, or the PDAC, as part of this iterative process where we meet with them at regular touchpoints to provide information and obtain feedback from different perspectives to ensure the project is going on the right course. So currently, right now, we're in phase one. We're about to finalize phase one. And phase one really involved a significant portion of background research to understand the local context, as well as research from other municipalities to understand approaches taken in other jurisdictions where they're either have CIPs in place for affordable housing or undergoing the same process the town is undertaking right now. We've also held two public outreach events, an initial open house in December and a second open house held last Thursday, as I noted. Additionally, we have had two targeted stakeholder sessions, one with the Northumberland Affordable Housing Group and one with Developer and Real Estate Group to get more targeted feedback on specific questions. So the final goal of phase one really is to prepare a background and options report, which we are now finalizing. Following that, we're going to move into phase two, which will involve the drafting of the CIP and revising the plan's layout based on discussions with town staff, the PDAC stakeholders, and the public. And then finally, upon finalization of the CIP, we will present that to the public and move forward with the town towards implementation in spring of 2020. Quickly, in terms of housing supply, the existing conditions in the town consist primarily of ground-related dwellings, and the majority of homes are owned. And we just wanted to do a quick background scan in terms of the context in that regard, and those were the findings we came up with there. In terms of the rental supply, and we looked at the CMHC primary rental market data available from October 2019, and you'll note here that there is quite a low vacancy rate, particularly for bachelor one-bedroom and three-bedroom units, as well as overall 8%, which the CMHC Canada Mortgage and Housing Corporation identifies 3% as a healthy vacancy rate for a community. So the town's vacancy rate is quite below that. In terms of the average rents as well, the overall average rent is $1,121 monthly, and that is the data we have available that's reflective of the primary rental market, which is purpose-built rental units. It's not units that would otherwise be in the secondary market, such as second suites, basement apartments, or houses that are for rent in the private market. This is solely based on those purpose-built units. Also, as part of the background research, in addition to the contextual analysis, we completed a review of other municipalities that have implemented CIPs focused on affordable and rental housing. And this cross-jurisdictional scan included Sault Ste. Marie, Peterborough, London, Cambridge, and as they all have CIPs in place. And we also looked at Belleville, Berry, and Mississauga, who are in various stages of completing their CIP work, similar to where the town is now, with, I think, Berry being close to complete, Belleville just a bit behind, the town of Coburg, and Mississauga just a bit further ahead. We spoke with area planners in those jurisdictions to discuss the organization of the CIP, how it's implemented, what the uptake has been like, and opportunities and challenges they've experienced along the way. And ultimately, the research provided a series of key findings, which we're going to use to guide the next phase of developing our draft of our CIP for the town. And essentially, the findings are identified and include program structural elements and common financial incentives. So you'll see in the slide here, typically, most of the programs include CIP agreements, which require the applicant or the developer to enter into with the municipality. They've identified specific CIP-eligible areas, typically within highly urban or dense locations, but some municipalities have as well identified the whole community as the CIP area. And all of the programs have adopted the definition of affordability based on that in the provincial policy statement. And in terms of the common financial incentives, exempting municipal planning fees related to development applications was common throughout, as well as the development charge incentives, including waivers of development charges, reductions, or deferrals, and the inclusion of tax increment equivalent grants. In terms of trying to determine the uptake on a lot of these studies, the longitudinal data is not available readily yet because most of these CIPs are in their infancy still. So we know that the programs are out there. There has been some uptake, but there's no longitudinal data from other municipalities because these programs are relatively new. So as I said, we've had two touchpoints with the community to date. The first touchpoint was back in December of 2019, and that consisted of a project launch event to introduce stakeholders and members of the public to the project and obtain preliminary feedback on priorities with respect to incentives for affordable and rental housing. And the key feedback at that session included a range of topics, including financial programs that could be beneficial for Coburg, and ideas that were brought forward by participants included streamlining and fast-tracking approvals, financing for conversions of existing buildings, development charge waivers, tax incentives, and application fee reductions. And other ideas shared included using surplus municipal lands for affordable housing projects and utilizing public-private partnerships to provide housing supports. We also heard from citizens through the town's website, which allows residents to submit ideas, answer polls, and review work to date. And the online feedback focused on ensuring that the CIP focus is on a mix of affordable rental housing throughout the town to ensure a mix of housing types throughout, as opposed to concentrated in one area. As I noted, we did hold some stakeholder interviews in early January with two groups, first, the Northumberland Affordable Housing Committee, and second, a group of developers, both not-for-profit developers and private developers, as well as real estate stakeholders. And the intent of these sessions was to understand from the perspectives of people who are providing affordable housing and developing affordable housing, what benefit the CIP would have to them. And we identified seven common themes from each session. So from the Affordable Housing Committee session, they really identified the need to increase housing options, particularly with respect to the smaller units, one-bedroom units, and bachelor units throughout the town. They identified that it would be important to incorporate design, sustainability, and supports in affordable housing to allow people to age in place and provide for an affordable level throughout the life cycle. They also talked about, in terms of funding, whether or not there was a possibility to explore a tiered approach to funding in that if you're providing a certain type of housing, you would be eligible for additional incentives. Or, so for instance, if you were a shelter, perhaps you would get 75% of the incentives, but if you were providing an affordable ownership housing unit, maybe you would only be eligible for 50% of the funding. So that was something they asked us to explore. Again, they identified streamlining development approvals processes, and they were very adamant that a town-wide approach should be utilized, as opposed to focusing the funding or incentives on a particular area because the idea is to provide for a mix of incomes and a mix of unit types throughout the town, not just in one area. They also spoke about incentivizing shelter development, noting that many shelters in the community are in need of repair and are currently over-served. And then finally, the final theme from this group was that there are substantial stigmas associated with affordable housing, and there should be an opportunity to provide an education piece to help reduce the stigma associated with affordable housing. The findings from the Developer and Real Estate Stakeholder Session actually were very similar to the findings from those in the Affordable Housing Committee, and the themes there were really, there needs to be some assistance for funding for the not-for-profit sector in particular. They identified that there are some difficulties in them accessing other funds because they have to prove they own the land, and sometimes that's difficult with a not-for-profit model in particular. Again, streamlining the development approvals process, increasing the rental housing options throughout the town. And so I think what came out was not only is there a need for affordable units, but there's a need for purpose-built rental housing units across the spectrum, across the continuum throughout the town. Again, they emphasized using a town-wide approach to provide that community mix and not concentrate affordable units in one particular area. Again, encouraging second units, this was something that came up a lot among this group. They identified that there is a real on-top market in potentially providing housing through second units, basement, suites, and the town currently does permit those, but what came out from the conversation was that perhaps this could be looked at in terms of looking at the regulatory framework under which they're currently permitted to provide some sort of leniency. Again, addressing stigmas associated with affordable housing was something that the Developer and Real Estate stakeholders recognized and identified that it's very difficult to address the affordable housing issue without addressing those social issues and that go along with it. And again, finally, they were very interested in understanding the timing, logistics, and administration, and when the funding would be available. And so finally, as the final part of our background research, we had SHS Consulting undertake a financial pro forma for test cases, and under various scenarios, there are kind of hypothetical case scenarios, the being if you were to develop certain types of units, what the yield would be and what the affordability level would be. And based on the findings of SHS's work, it was determined that the scenarios with the largest and greatest potential were those for purpose-built rental units in the context of the town, and they determined that that should be one of the focuses for the CIP. And taking all of that information in, we developed kind of five overview, or five focus areas for the CIP to address, and these are increasing the supply of purpose-built rental housing, increasing the supply of smaller units, promoting the development of second units, promoting the development of mixed-ratio developments, and supporting emergency and transitional housing services. And these key focus areas were the focus of the open house held on Thursday, January 23rd, for which we are currently analyzing the data and the feedback on. And so with that information, in terms of next steps, we are going to continue to collect and analyze the data that we received from the open house last week and use that to finalize the background report, prepare the draft CIP, following which we are going to meet with town staff, the PDAC, and the stakeholders and the public. We'll refine the CIP based on feedback received through that consultation round, and we will present the final at a statutory public meeting at a future date, which is likely to be in April of 2020. And I would just note that the dates would be subject to change, just in terms of we need to look at our calendar and identify the best time for a meeting with the public PDAC and stakeholders on kind of this draft CIP piece. And I think with that, that is a quick overview of where we've been since September, and I would thank everyone for listening and open the floor to questions, if there are any.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Any clarification questions, members of council? Starting with Councilor Darlene, then I'll go to Councilor Charlie.
Thank you, Worship, and thank you for the presentation. Just a quick question, I attended the open house the other night. I was just wondering, with the number of people who attended that, would that be an average number or small group, or was that a good turnout for this type of CIP?
I wasn't at that meeting because I was away on vacation, but I did hear it was very well-attended, and I would say that typically for these types of meetings, they're not often well-attended, so I don't know if...
Well, I just wondered if you had that feedback, because I thought it was very well-attended. I was wondering if the room was too small when it started to fill up, so I just wanted to confirm that. Thank you.
Councilor Charlie?
Thank you, Kelly, for bringing us up to speed. I was just wondering, later this evening, council also has on its agenda the Coburg Affordable Housing Strategy, so I'm just wondering, do you have a copy of it, and how are you using it to inform your creation of the CIP?
Oh, through the chair? We are actually working with SHS Consulting as part of this project team, and they are the ones who prefer the affordable housing strategy. So we're well-aligned, and we're well-aware of that information, and we consult with SHS regularly to ensure that those two align.
Other questions, members of council? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Larmour?
Next, Your Worship, we have delegations, and first, we have Troy Mills, the Coburg resident regarding door-to-door service for accessible transit in the town of Coburg.
Welcome, Troy, and I just want to thank you. I believe every member of council has received a handout or attachment for reference. Okay, when we get close to the 10-minute mark, Troy, I'll give you a heads-up if we're getting close to that time limit.
Good evening, Mayor Henderson and council members. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Troy Mills. I am a member of this town for the last 10 years. I am also a past vice-chairman of the Accessibilities Advisory Committee for the town of Coburg, now sitting as one of the members. I have been in a wheelchair for the last 50 years. I have also been using different variations of disability transit since I was in primary school, right up to until now, from Toronto to Coburg. My condition is hydrocephalus, a fluid on the brain. I have shunt implants in the front of my forehead, and they have been implanted since I was three months old. I have been paralyzed from both kneecaps down due to a surgical accident when I was 10 years old in 1970. I have serenogmyelia, which is fluid-filled cyst from the base of my spine to my T2 level, and Arnold-Terrari decompression or malformation, and I've had 43 surgeries to date. I'm a registered user of Wheels Transportation System here in Coburg for the last 10 years, as well as the past BTS systems for the last five and a half years. The reason for being present at this meeting this evening is to express my strong concerns in discussing of the changes to the Wheels service in regards to being door-to-door or opposed to curb-to-curb. It has been brought to my attention that this will be discussed and addressed at the council level on the date of January 27, 2020. The information that has been brought to the council members is not correct, and I am concerned that council would be making decisions that will affect persons with disabilities and elderly persons based on the incorrect information. It is not just me that will be affected, as I am already affected as a person in a manual wheelchair, who currently rides the wheel system at least 40 times a month. Saying that I have already been, seeing that I have already been affected, I must board the bus alone without the driver's assistance. I, in the past, have personally been injured while entering the bus... I, in the past, have personally been injured while entering the bus using the ramp of Route 1 at the downtown terminal. As I was trying to board the bus in my manual wheelchair, my chair flipped back, flipped all the way back, and I hit my head on the sidewalk. This happened a year ago. Recently, I have been coming down the ramp on the Wheels bus again. With no assistance, my wheelchair turned to its side on the ramp. I was able to correct the angle of myself, but what I was, if I was someone else, couldn't correct the issue. I find, in speaking with drivers about this issue, there is very, there is very few that want to go along with the demands that the town is placing on their drivers. I would also like to have an answer, why now has this issue changed in the last few months? Just because the driver doesn't like how the bus has a ramp on it and not a hydraulic lift? This makes my point that, looking at new vehicles, thought by council, look at their descriptions, each one of them has, sorry, each one that is being looked at is exactly what the driver is complaining about. This is also affecting me in a negative way, that I am somewhat disturbed about losing my own independence to go shopping or anything like that because of the governing body of the town of Coburg making mistakes in judgment, because of the complaint about an injury of a driver that never actually happened. And there is no documents filed to prove it. It's merely hearsay. If we take a look at the, the actual date of meeting was January 27th, you'll see it on your file. The report date was January 16th, 2020. And this is what I was referring to. In November 2019, an accident, an incident occurred with an employee of the town contractor was injured on the job while pushing a wheelchair. The incident led to the driver no longer being able to physically push, pull, or lift riders, as many have been past presence for the particular driver. Wheels members expressed concern for those who had come to rely on the attendant-type service that was being practiced, albeit without the town's direction. The driver injured, injury incident prompted staff to review the town of Coburg's Wheels Transit Service existing policy. Regarding driver assistance expectations, the policy has remained in a draft format and driver assistance has not been clearly identified or defined, nor is it defined in the Acts of Accessibilities for the Ontarios with the Disabilities Act, AODA. Staff are currently researching municipal policies for comparison, persons, purposes, and will prepare an updated draft Wheels Trans Service Policy and application form for the AAC review and council approval. Well, that's one thing we haven't gotten to yet, is that we're not hearing what the actual final purpose of that is yet and what the answer is going to be. The AOD designs the requirements of a specialized transit service as providing an origin-of-destination service for those who do, due to their disability, cannot get onto a conventional transit stop or use the conventional transit system. Well, speaking to that, I'm actually having to use the regular bus stops in order to get onto the bus, because it's, when the ramp is extended onto the driveway, it creates a, an angle which I cannot climb alone. And so the circumstances, when I'm at the bus stop, my angle is like that, so it's fair enough that I can actually do it. But the, but if, the situation is, the drivers have actually been coming to my curb in my apartment, at my apartment, so therefore we're working through that situation. The town of Coburg, as well as many other municipalities, refer to the service as door-to-door, which was brought into question on November 25th, 2019. Council meeting, when it was interpreted, is more literal context whereby drivers should be expected to act as attendants to personal support workers. We don't want PSWs. That's not what we're looking for, as far as that's concerned goes, for those who are not capable of getting to the transit vehicle at the curbside, board, disembark, and/or transport themselves to the destination, once they are off the, to the, off the transit vehicle. Well, the circumstance is, is that being on with Wheels in Toronto, or Wheels Trans for 18 years in Toronto, and according to this information that has been brought up in the, you'll see it in your notes as well, about... On one of the, one of the notes is saying that the actual Wheels and TTC doesn't, if I come to the back, I'm going to go back to the last page. It talks about where Wheels drivers will not actually assist their clients to get on the buses. Ladies and gentlemen, you'll have a look at this picture. That's a Wheels Trans vehicle. That's a Wheels driver, and that's a person helping the client onto the bus. And it says in the report that actually the Wheels does not, Wheels Trans does not assist their passengers, which is incorrect. And the other thing is, is that, and where it says the cost of the new, thoughts about the new Wheels bus, remember, take a look at where it says Wheels Options on the top of the page. And then it says, purchase of a new vehicle to use as main Wheels bus? Look at every, the description right next door to it. Every one of those vehicles has not got a lift. They're all ramped. And that's exactly what the Wheels drivers do not want, because they're going to have to go through the old same problem all over again. The prior bus did have a lift, and that's what they're arguing about. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hearing me. Is there any questions? Any questions?
Is that it, Troy?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. As we're looking through the documents, I'm sure council may have more questions later, because I know they're flipping as they're reading. But at this point, are there any questions of clarification for Troy at this point? Councilor Charlie?
Thank you, Troy, for coming in, providing your perspective on this issue. It's a very important issue. I'm just wondering if you can explain a little bit more, before November, the level of service that you received from drivers to help deliver a door-to-door service, and exactly how that's changed? And you've explained a little bit about how that's impacted you, because I believe you're in a manual wheelchair, so it's difficult to, to physically push yourself up the ramp. But if you can just explain exactly how the service has changed in your experience, and what you would like it to be in an ideal situation?
Well, right now, I've been speaking to all the drivers, and there is only the one that actually says that he doesn't want to do, to be able to do that. And all the drivers are being held by the request of the town, that they're not allowed to be doing that. But they all want to, and they feel that they're not, they're not doing their job if they're not assisting. So that's where we are right now.
Councilor Charlie?
Just to clarify a little bit more, when you say assisting, exactly what was the driver doing to assist you so that you had a door-to-door service?
Okay. What, what that's actually happening is that when we get to, for instance, I live at the Windermere. Okay, so the Windermere apartments, we have, the driver, the driver drives up the driveway, the parking area, and then puts his ramp down, allows me to come in. Okay? But the situation is, if, for me to get off, it's fine. But the situation is, is that for other people that are worse off than me, and also in a manual wheelchair, the circumstances, there is no help for them, that they can't get up, can't get up the ramps. And I know of situations where people have actually been left at the, at the hospital after dialysis, and the circumstances is that they were not helped, they were helped onto the vehicle, but when they came back, they weren't allowed to help anymore. So that's not fair.
Okay. Other questions? I'll go to Councilor Darling.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mills, for your presentation. I'm just curious, are you aware that we are proposing this evening, later on in the meeting, to install a device that hooks onto the wheelchairs and pulls them up the ramp and actually lowers back down the ramp? Under the information we have, the lifts are good when you're putting a wheelchair up, but people in walkers can't use them because they're not allowed to stand on them, on a lift when it's moving?
That's correct.
And so we are looking at this device that'll lower you up and down the ramp. Are you familiar with that in any way?
You're referring to the Q-strains? Q-strains automated?
That's it, yes.
Okay, the situation is with the automation, number one, in that particular bus, you don't have the proper places to actually attach it. The wall, the wall on the Wheels bus is empty, there's nothing behind it. So there, the security, the bolts will not hold. Restraining bolts off the wall will not hold.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm under the impression that we have been told that the bus can be retrofitted to hold that device, and that we were going to put that on the new bus, but that'll be yet to be determined. Thank you.
Other questions? Clarification? Okay, I'm sure that council's interested in reading through the package. I saw everyone flipping, so thank you for presenting this information. I'm sure if we have further questions, we can filter them through you by way of our accessibility coordinator.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Larmour?
Next, Worship, we have delegation number two. We have Keith Oliver, Coburg citizen regarding the Coburg Fitness Park Working Group regarding the proposed adult fitness park.
Okay, Keith, again, we know you're no stranger to our chambers, and again, thank you for this information. I know we received it tonight. I know council two was flipping through it. And we'll, mind you, the 10-minute limit.
Just while we're waiting, I'd just like to say, in regard to the first individual giving testimony on the CIP, that it'd be a good idea to listen to the CBC Ideas program that was broadcast yesterday. It was about how Finland is eliminating homelessness, and one of the key tools is And also how little old Medicine Hat Saskatchewan has eliminated homelessness. Members of council, Mr. Mayor, stakeholder, deputy mayor, members of the public staff. I want to first issue, okay, thank you. I first want to issue an apology. I intended to bring you up to date on January the, what was it, 9th and 10th, when you were deliberating the final draft of the capital budget for the town. I misunderstood the order of things, I wasn't able to do that as a consequence. And in effect, this is what I would have said. It's important to base any kind of decisions that council makes on evidence as opposed to opinion. And I want to go to the issue of whether or not the fitness park, the concept of a fitness park, the details of a fitness park are a popular item amongst the citizens of Coburg. In 2016, and over a four-week period, we gathered 1,038 signatures on a petition. That was much more than signing a piece of paper. In every case, the signature was well-briefed on the concept of the park, on the type of equipment to be used. There were shown photographs, the purposes, the various purposes that an exercise park can address and achieve, and also the price. Less than 10% declined to sign. In order for them to keep in touch, we gave them the address of our website, and that's been in effect now for about three years. It is now undergoing its third renovation, as we enter the third stage of development and publicity and support. Another indication of popularity I would put to you is the ranking of the fitness park in the 2018 Waterfront User Needs and Detail Plan. It's, as you may know by now, it is 31st on a list of 83 items, projects. Law, the enhancement of the beach bylaw and security is number 35 and number 55. Improved washrooms and changing rooms are listed in items 61, 62, 74, and 75. Parking and vehicle access improvements are listed in the order 48, 53, 58, 67, 73. And improvements to boating, and as we all know, that's a rather fierce crowd, are listed as 41, 42, and 46, amongst others. So at 31, it's, it's fair to say that there is a good, solid interest in a fitness park. Now, the town makes other investments in improving the quality of life in Coburg. And, and those investments often appear to be underused, but few would question council's wisdom in supporting them. These include bike paths and children's playgrounds. Ironically, the best-used playground in Coburg is down at the waterfront, and that's the location that we recommend for the fitness park. By excluding the, the fitness park from the budget, our efforts to raise monetary and in-kind support from five more sources is now on hold. The question we are constantly act is, where is Coburg's support? What council did not know on January 10th was that we were in the middle of negotiating with Rotary for a $25,000 grant. When the fitness park was removed from the capital budget, and therefore not recognized as a project by the town, our negotiations ended. Gord Laye assured me that we could renew that later this year, if town was to show its support. We have other possibilities. The Canadian Dermatological Association has grants available for sun shading, but the deadline for the application is February 28. Ontario Trillium Foundation, its capital stream has a deadline of November 18th, but if Coburg's population exceeds 20,000, we're no longer eligible. And the last figures I saw, official figures, our population was at 19,400. Other sources of monetary or in-kind support that are waiting on a town commitment, Dufferin Concrete, Wuss Brothers donations of a 34-meter concrete pump, private funding, of course, and there are programs coming up, additional program, grant programs coming up this year in the province of Ontario. Now, the other thing too, that we want to show you, and in the material that I've given you tonight, there's some substantial progress being made in the development of a Fit for Life Coburg program. And this is perhaps one of the greatest benefits for all, and it will have and needs the fitness park as a focus. What I've given you is a six-page draft outline of the content of the program, and we also have a bid, if you will, from Katz Media to do the graphic work and the cost of publications that we see financing and distributing freely throughout the town. None of that will be financed by the town itself, it'll be financed by other sources. Now, we also have the importance of further establishing the relationship between the Fitness Park Working Group and the town. And the best way of doing that for us, as we go out to raise funds, is a letter of reference. I just want to note that the fitness park and the Fit for Life Coburg program complies exactly with a number of policy objectives of this town, including the strategic plan for this session of the council. And now to a possible resolution. The most desirable resolution in terms of its consequence for the fitness park and the program is that 25,000 for the park be reinstated in the capital budget. That's the ideal. This will increase the budget by 1/10 of 1%, and we- This will increase the budget by one-tenth of 1%, and we do recognize that every dollar counts, and we're not being frivolous in that regard. But it keeps the project alive by confirming the town's support and enables the concept of a partnership between principal contributors, such as the town, the federal government, and private sources, if you will, or semi-private service clubs. And this gives due credit to all that are involved, and it reduces the burden on each. The park at Peterborough, the park at Port Perry, and the park at Whitby, we're all financed by Rotary, but we're not asking for that. We want a real, honest-to-goodness, public-private partnership, and that's... We hope the town will appreciate that. Now, we have, we still have to hear about the result of the federal grant, the New Horizons Grant, that the town made, the application of which the town made possible on June the 10th. The application was submitted on June 21st. We still have not heard from that, but the spending, the end of the spending period, as it stands now, and as far as we have known by investigating through the Parks Department, is November of this year. And so, an alternative, a compromise, a good, solid win-win, is the following: that the fitness park be included in the town 2020 capital budget until such time as the success or failure of the federal New Horizons Grant application for $25,000 becomes known. If the federal grant is successful, the $25,000 can be reallocated from other capital projects on the advice of staff, leaving the total budget for 2020 unchanged. If the federal budget grant is not forthcoming, the project is then put on hold, if not abandoned altogether. If $25,000 is included in the capital budget under whatever terms, staff is directed to work with the working group to submit an application for the $18,000 from the Canadian Dermatological Association to finance the sun shading device. Again, the end of the application period is next month, February 28. If $25,000 is allocated in the capital budget under whatever terms, staff would be directed to supply the working group with a letter of reference, which defines the relationship, and its intention is to be used in the solicitation of monetary or in-kind donations. In any event, Fitness Park Working Group can on its own renew its funding request from Rotary. And finally, if the $25,000 is included in the capital budget under whatever terms, staff will work with the Fitness Park Working Group to apply to the Ontario Trillium Foundation capital stream for an as-yet undecided monetary grant, and will do so before the 2020 deadline of November 28. That is the extent of my delegation. I'm more than happy to receive questions.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your submission. Questions, clarification, members at council? Counselor Chorley?
Thank you, Keith, for your delegation. I'm interested in your Fit for Life Coburg program. Can you just give us a little bit more of an explanation on how this program would help an adult fitness park be fully utilized?
The programs like this, everyone is becoming more and more aware of the benefits of being physically fit and physically active, even in whatever your state of health, being more physically active, changing some of your habits every day. That's the broad appeal that the fitness program, Fit for Life Coburg, is based on. The park itself will have signage discussing the whole, that outlines the principles behind and the benefits behind being more physically active. It will connect people that use the fitness park to the CCC, for example, make them aware of all the programs that are up there. It will connect to both private and public, profit and not-for-profit groups, and there's loads of them throughout the town, from, you know, modest walking groups that meet every Wednesday for coffee and then walk the boardwalk, right up to the seniors' sports federation, and there's a chapter here in Coburg. So the park itself, while providing all kinds of specific opportunities for exercise, for example, I had a knee operation, I got six shots at physiotherapy, I wasn't anywhere near ready to leave that. I couldn't afford the Y. I did two weeks of free exercise at the Y, but after that, I can't pay $70 to $100 an hour for a physiotherapist, and yet I could go to the, could have gone to the fitness park and use the equipment there. And I found that that type, I ended up buying a piece of equipment because of my experience at the Y, but, and that's helped enormously. So there's a whole, there's a whole matter of recovering from injury operations, again, focused on the park, but it goes beyond the park. Once people see the benefits, there's even a type of sign you can put next to a bench that shows individuals how to use the bench to do a specific number of exercises. They can go home and do that with their chair from their dining room set. Prepartum and postpartum mothers will be invited to the site, and there will be instructions there for how they can exercise to keep fit as they go through the whole course of bearing a child. So the park is a focal point with a very dedicated use, and then, as the focal point, it then is encompassed by this larger program about keeping physically active, physically fit, keeping involved in the community and various groups and so on. I hope that answered your question. It's a big concept. This whole idea of involving the community now in a broad program of keeping physically fit has been something that's developed out of our thinking as we progressed through what are the benefits of a park, you know, how can they be realized, et cetera, et cetera, and talking to other parks managers in the 11 other fitness parks that we've visited. You know, they all talk about reduced public use. I'm perfectly honest about that. But then when we got into discussing it, there were incidents where programs have been centered, exercise programs have been centered on the park, and the use has increased. And they are waiting to see what we produce in the way of a program that involves our community, and they would like a copy.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, clarification? I have one, if I may, to the, not to Keith at this point, but may come back to you, to Deputy Director Bain. It indicated that we did do our submission, just to remind me, on June 10th, that, do you have any feedback from AD Agency at this point as to where it might be in the process?
Through you. Staff did check today, and we do not have any more information, other than they received it, but we don't have any feedback.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Any other questions, clarification, members of council? See none. Thank you, Keith, for your presentation.
No, no, thank you for hearing me.
Mr. Larmour?
Next, Your Worship, we have delegation number three. We have Lynn Taylor, Gwen Barnes, and Mary Mouton, Family Council of Golden Plough Lodge regarding stretcher transportation services.
Anyway, Gwen and Lynn, thank you for taking time to present to our council. We look forward to your presentation. Again, as I said, all delegates, we offer a 10-minute window. If we get close to that, I'll give you a reminder with if it needs a minute to go. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Henderson and councilors. I'm Gwen Barnes. To my left is Lynn Taylor and Mary Mouton. We are members of the Golden Plough Lodge Family Council. Part of our role is to advocate for our residents and families. We have some concerns about transportation for residents on stretchers who are trying to return from hospital to their residence. In the last six months, we've had residents who were transferred to Northumberland Hills Hospital Emergency Department by ambulance. In one case, a 93-year-old who had a fall and suffered a huge laceration to the head required stitches. After being transferred by ambulance to Northumberland Hills Hospital and having tests done, it was determined the resident also had a fracture in two bones in the neck. There was no displacement of the bones. A rigid collar was applied, and then, after an eight-hour wait, the head wound was stitched. Then the resident was discharged. That was a surprise to the family member accompanying the resident. Next came the hard part, finding transportation for the resident. The resident, who is wheelchair-bound at the home, was on a stretcher, so that restricts the options available. A transport company, Voyageur, was contacted, and only after a credit card number was approved did the resident get a time for transportation and a cost. The time was initially an eight-hour wait, but was later changed to a three-hour wait. This was now 6:00 PM. The cost of the transportation from the hospital to the Golden Plough Lodge was $160.18. The family member was shocked but had no option. Another resident had a similar experience, but to add further stress, a family member had accompanied the resident to the hospital in the ambulance. When the resident was discharged, it was after midnight. The resident was transported by Voyageur, but the family member was stranded in the emergency department. There was no other family or friend to take that person home and no taxis running. That family member had to spend the night in the waiting room until a taxi was available. We have contacted other agencies for information on transportation. The Ontario Patient Transport, they connect you with non-emergent transport services in various locations in Ontario. The Apollo Transport, based in Lakefield, we weren't able to connect with them. Voyageur Medical Transport, based in London, has vehicles in Peterborough, Bowmanville, and many other places. Their cost is $160.18 for 10 kilometers or less. Over 10 kilometers is $2.50 per kilometer. Community Care do not transfer people on stretchers. Their clients have to travel independently or with a PSW. Ambulance is only allowed to transport emergency situations. They cannot transport someone who has been released from the hospital. Wheels do not transport clients on stretchers. We'd like you to be aware of this area of resident care. That's very stressful for residents and families, and there doesn't seem to be any other options. Has anyone considered approaching a transport company on behalf of the nursing homes in the area? I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to bring this issue forward. It's an area that hasn't been addressed, to our knowledge. Our residents need some reassurance that they can return to their home in a timely manner with no financial worries. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Questions, clarification, starting with Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you for your advocacy, and I'm sorry to hear that some of your residents have been experiencing such stressful experiences. My question to you is through your presentations, have you raised these concerns through a delegation such as this to Northumberland County Council and the NHH Board of Directors?
We have talked to the director at the Golden Plough Lodge.
And we are sending copies of our letter to county services and different nursing homes and just making everyone aware, because obviously people were not aware that this type of cost occurred with the seniors.
The rule at the Golden Plough Lodge is that they have, they are not responsible for returning residents, although they've put them in a stretcher and sent them, they're not allowed to have any, any situation where they can provide transportation back. I can't understand that, but so be it. That's supposed to be their home. In reality, those people are in there that is now their home, and, but that's, maybe that's a government issue as far as the Minister of Health. We may get there.
If I may, I'll build on Counselor Beatty's question, a point, a very valid one. As a member of Northumberland County Council, one of my roles is to sit on social services, and I want to be fair and clear here at this point, that issue in his last year with me sitting on that committee has not been raised with me at the table with other council members. I also sat with the warden, Bob Sanderson. So I will ensure, first of all, two things. I'll request that this, I'll request this to be put on our next agenda and to see if there's merit going forward to certainly county council, because it's one thing for staff to know, but if it never gets to county council, then I can assure you of all the things we're dealing with, and we deal a lot with EMS and movement and paramedics, paramedicine, and all the wonderful steps we're making, but if it doesn't get to council, then we will not hear of this issue. So you have my promise that I will bring this forward to Counselor Beatty's point to the meeting, and I'll make a request that perhaps it get to the floor, and if it gets to that, could we call you to perhaps consider presenting to county council if that be the case?
Certainly will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions, members of council? Thank you very much for your presentation. Mr. Larmour?
Next, Your Worship, on the agenda, we have delegation actions.
So the first one would be under accessibilities, so, no, Counselor Burkett?
Now, would this be under transportation, which would be Counselor Darling, or would this be accessible?
I guess some direction, which way would it perhaps? Is there one or the other, Mr. Larmour?
It could be considered both, so I think it's at discretion of the Chair as well as the members of councils, so it deals with accessibility and transportation.
Counselor Burkett, thank you.
I will move that we receive this delegation for information purposes as we're dealing with this item later in the agenda.
Okay, so noted and discussion. All in favor? Carried? Next one, it goes to Counselor Chorley?
Regarding an adult fitness park, I've got quite a substantive delegation action. I've taken Mr. Oliver's suggestions and put them into quite a similar action, and I'll read it out. That council receive the delegation from Keith Oliver regarding the proposed adult fitness park for information purposes. And further, that should the application for a $25,000 New Horizons Grant be successful, that council, and there's two points, first, provide the Fitness Park Working Group with a letter of endorsement to aid their community fundraising efforts, and secondly, authorize staff to work with the Fitness Park Working Group where appropriate to submit additional grant applications. And further, that council consider funding up to $25,000 of the project if needed in the 2021 capital budget. the 2021 capital budget, so next year's capital budget. And if anyone on council would like a copy, I can send this through to the clerk.
Is anybody clear or read once more in our three parts, but I thought was well explicit and clear to me, but I'm open to any comment from members of council? Does anybody who would like that read a second time? Any discussion based on the amended motion or motion before us? Hearing none? All those in favor? Against? Next, we have the number three, Golden Plow Lodge. Could I have some direction with this fall at this time to general government, because they see it more of a county? Can I have some direction, Mr. Larmour?
Through Your Worship, I would believe that, yeah, it would be through your discussion with council, a county council direction for a delegation action. So the alternative, which is the Deputy Mayor sitting in council, might be able to provide a delegation action, even suggests for me to throw, send this correspondence to the county to be part of their council meeting agenda to the clerk.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Worship. The action item from the delegation would be just that, to accept for information purposes, the delegation from Lynn Taylor, Gwen Barnes, and Mary Mouton to direct the mayor to bring this up at county council in his role on Social Services Committee, and to invite the three ladies that were here this evening to a delegation of county council. And then to bring that back to council with their report, once that is done.
Discussion? Counselor Darling?
Yes, if I may ask the Deputy Mayor if she would add to that, that we forward a copy of the letter to MP Pete Peggini to make him and his ministry aware of these issues.
Absolutely. If you could add that to the delegation or to the...
To the addition, addendum from Counselor Darling, is there any concern adding that portion? Hearing none, we'll go back to the full motion. Does somebody want it read again with the addition? Hearing none? All those in favor? Against? Carried. You all right with that, Mr. Larmour? Thank you. Mr. Larmour, back to you.
Next, Your Worship, we have reports, and we have General Government Services, the Chair, Deputy Mayor Segan.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Worship. The first item is a memo from the Treasurer Interim Chief Administrative Officer regarding a memorandum of understanding between the Town of Coburg and the Coburg Dragon Boat and Canoe Club. The action recommended that council authorize the interim chief administrative officer to execute the memorandum of understanding between the Corporation of the Town of Coburg and the Coburg Dragon Boat and Canoe Club as attached to this report. Any questions for members of council? Counselor Darling?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to amend the recommended action. I'll put the motion on the floor, and then we'll have our discussion. I don't know if everybody has their copy of the memorandum. I didn't write out each section. I've referred to them as numbers, but I'll explain, I'll explain as I go. So the recommended action, that the MOU between the town and the club be amended as follows. Item one, the term. The MOU is for an initial period of two years, March 1, 2020, and ending February 28, 2022, with a five-year extension if agreed by both parties. Item two is agreement for the provision of the club compound. In the draft memo, 2B is about the rent. My amendment is that the rent for the club will be at the current rate of 50 cents per square foot plus HST for the term of this MOU, and this sentence will replace clause 2B in the draft MOU. 2D is about the 600-square-foot building. And all I'm asking is that they incorporate into that clause that the building be built at their expense. 2G and H, I'm asking that both those clauses be removed, and I'll give the reasons for that later. Item three is about mutually agreeing on any discrepancies. I'm asking at the end of that clause that we add, if a resolution cannot be reached, that the town will have the final say. And the same is for the responsibilities of the club on 5A. Is that same, if a resolution cannot be reached, the town will have the final say. And item seven is administration of this MOU, that the signing officer for the club be the board chair or president, who would be the most senior signing authority with the organization. And further, that the MOU be sent back to the CAO for wording of the final MOU, which will be on the agenda for approval at the February 3, 2020 council meeting. I can go through my list of reasoning for each one, if you'd like, or if you'd like some discussion on each, and we can discuss each item as we go.
Perhaps the 2G and H, Counselor Darling, if you could expand or just read those two clauses, because you have the MOU in front of you. The rest of them look pretty clear to me as far as your rationale, but the removal of both those clauses, if you wouldn't mind reading those?
I will. Let me make sure I get the right thing here, too. 2G is, as the property owners, the town is responsible for addressing any issues of flooding and/or weather-related damage that impacts the viability of the club compound. H, the club will notify the town as soon as possible if the club compound incurs any weather-related damage. And my reasoning for that, let me make sure I'm here. If damage is done to the compound as a result of Mother Nature, it should not be the town's responsibility to pay for repairs. The club should take care of this through their insurance. It's my rationale for that. If they build a building and Mother Nature takes the shingles off or to the roof office, I don't see how that becomes the liability of the community. It's, you know, they're getting it for a reasonable rent. They're putting the compound in, and it's my opinion that that should be their responsibility or their insurance company would cover it. Just as the shingles went off my roof in my home, my insurance company covered it.
Any comments on the proposed amendments to this motion? Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not necessarily the amendments straightforward to me. I do have some general questions about the MOU. Is now the right time to ask those or after?
We're discussing the amendments right now?
I'll reserve my questions until we go back to the motion thing.
Any further questions? Counselor Darling?
If I may, I'd like to give my reasoning for the amendments. Item one, the term. A two-year term will allow this council to reassess the MOU, excuse me, in year four of our current term, and extend it for another five years of all as well. A two-year term will allow our new CAO to reassess all MOUs and possibly develop new policies and procedures for the development of MOUs to allow consistency across the town. Item two, the agreement for the rents is pretty straightforward. The amount of rent requested is the exact amount that the club has been paying for years. There's no increase in it. And for 2B, I have the opinion that we should not be lowering the rent to match existing MOUs. The CAO, along with staff, should be reevaluating and updating all existing MOUs when they come up for renewal and bringing a report back to council on each. Council risks setting a precedent for fees and rent charged to recreational clubs. The canoe club may be a not-for-profit organization, but is also a recreational organization. There are numerous recreational organizations in the town. We have the Northumberland Night Hawks Hockey, Coburg Minor Softball, West Northumberland Wild Hockey, Coburg Hardball Association, West Northumberland Curling Club, and Saxons Rugby, just to name a few, and I'm sure I missed some. To the best of my knowledge, all of these recreational organizations are subsidized in one way or another by the municipality. And also, to the best of my knowledge, each member pays a fee to their organization, and each of those organizations pays a fee for service, or they pay rent to the town to help offset the cost to the taxpayer. The canoe club should be no different. In 2D, with the clarity in the building, we should clarify the cost the building is at the club's expense, if it is allowed to be built in that area. I have a question. Did anyone check with the GRCA to see if construction of a building in that area would even be allowed? The GRC at this time is in the process of redeveloping new hazard index lines, which may restrict any construction in flooding area. As for 2H, I explained with Mother Nature. Item 3A, where there's a consent, mutual consent cannot be reached, there must be a means and place to resolve an issue where a mutual agreement cannot be reached. To my knowledge, all contracts within the town-state management has the right to manage. The town owns the property and must maintain control. The town must have the final say, and the same paragraph should be in for 5A. And that's the reasoning for my amendments. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Counselor Darling's amendments? Counselor Charlie?
If council will just permit me one moment, I'm just searching for a part of this MOU.
Deputy Mayor, if I may, through you to the CAO, just as the amendment does address putting the rent back to its original amount rather than reducing it, I believe somewhere in the report, and I can find the exact page, but my notes say that reducing the rent to $2 per annum to reflect what other compounds in the area are receiving. For my own enlightenment, I would just like to know what are those comparable compounds, because I'm not aware of. Just some elaboration on that would help me for context.
I'm going to forward that to Mr. Davies, but it looks like Counselor Charlie is ready.
Thank you. That's a good question, and I believe, and I can just refer to interim CAO Davy as well. It was our understanding that the Coburg Yacht Club, which has a compound immediately next door to the proposed compound, does pay $2 a year for that compound. It's a much larger compound. I think Mr. Davy can verify that, and it was the club's request that they pay, in terms of equity, that they pay the same amount as the Coburg Yacht Club. I understand Counselor Darling's point about the amount paid to the town for the use of town land, and I certainly agree that we need to review all of our contracts in that regard. But it's difficult, because those contracts are locked in for a set period of time, and there definitely is a level of inequality when a larger compound is $2 a year. And I'm just wondering if Counselor Darling has the calculation for how much the Coburg Dragon Boat and Canoe Club compound would cost? But I believe it would be approximately $1,600 a year for the size of compound that we're looking at.
If I may, the size of the compound was estimated at 4,000 square feet. At 50 cents per square foot would be $2,000 plus HST, if my figures are correct. And as for the, the compound of the yacht club, it is my opinion, and when this original, pardon me, it's not my opinion, it is fact that the original Dragon Boat Club rented the property before as a boat storage compound. And through time, it has evolved and become a camp, a recreational area. The yacht club is strictly for boat storage, and whether that agreement is binding for a number of years or is even fair at this time or should be reconsidered, I think is an item to be discussed when it does come due in future. I don't see reducing the fees and rents of town property back to, say, 1990 rates is good management. We should be looking at at least remaining consistent or adding. The costs for everything have gone up. Everybody realizes that, and going backwards, to me, is not the right step to make.
Counselor Charlie?
During the negotiations, there was one issue raised by the club with regard to the amount for the compound area. And that consideration was that last year, the administration of the Town of Coburg did require the club unexpectedly to provide lifeguards for a period of time, and the club provided an estimate of that cost, and that was around $6,000 estimate. That cost was borne by the club, and that was a requirement that wasn't imposed on other clubs operating in the West Harbor Basin. So with that in mind, through the negotiations, it was felt that it would be appropriate to reduce the rent for the club compound, partly to compensate for the $6,000 that the club bore last year, but also for reasons of equity. But to Counselor Darling's point, there could be another way to address this, and I have been thinking about the wording here, and I just direct council's attention to number two, 2B, where it says $2 per annum for the club compound. And it says, if the rental rate is renegotiated for other similar compounds in the area during this MOU, and the rate is lower than this agreement, the new rate will be applied to the club. I would suggest we could say, instead of if the rate is lower, we could say if the rate is higher. So that if the Town of Coburg renegotiated a rate with the Coburg Yacht Club, for example, and they were then paying a higher rate, then also the Coburg Dragon Boat and Canoe Club would pay the same rate. So that we have equity at this time, and when others, when their rate increases, then also the Coburg Yacht Club could increase.
Counselor Darling, and then Counselor Bureau?
Yes, I understand where you're coming from, but if I look at the $6,000, the rent the yacht club was paying before was based on a six-month base, or pardon me, the canoe club was paying, was based on a six-month basis. So if we doubled it, the six-month rent to a year's rent would be $4,000 plus HST, because they were getting it full year now. So I'm thinking that the $2,000 that we're not increasing it is sufficient funds to make up for the lifeguards that were rented last year. I firmly believe that we've got to be fair going ahead and looking at all memorandums. I realize some of them are outdated, and some of them may look like a real deal. Now, that's what was signed at the time, but I don't think we can go backwards on these. I think we have to keep moving forward.
Counselor Bureau?
I would have to agree with Counselor Darling. I understand that some different groups may take hits throughout their seasons or their during their clubs, but I think that we do have to move forward. And we have a lot of town land that we are leasing at $2 a year, $1 a year, and I think we really need to take a look at that. They have prime land down at the Marina. I think the lease agreement's great. We could have it, look at it again in two years. I think, I would have to agree with Counselor Darling on this one.
Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and perhaps through you to the CAO. And because I definitely have to, I echo Counselor Darling's and Counselor Charlie's concern about our MOUs need to be in common practice and equity across the board, which is why I can appreciate the amendment for a two-year period, because I believe that would give this council that time to get those practices in alignment. But my question is to Mr. Davy in 2B, if the rental rate is renegotiated for other similar compounds in the area during this MOU, and the rate is lower than this agreement, the new rate will be applied to the club. Is that a positioning or a point of negotiation that we have in other MOUs with our nonprofit partners, such as the Dressler House or the Fire Hall, Northumberland Players Curling Club? I'm just worried that we're getting into a very finite commitment, maybe in one MOU, even if it's, if it's common practice in our other ones. But otherwise, I'm worried that that line is getting us into too much of a commitment for this particular group.
Mr. Davy?
Yes, through the Chair to Counselor Beatty, no, I'm not aware that that particular clause exists in any other agreement. I think each of these agreements over the course of many, many years have been...
I think each of these agreements over the course of many, many years have been negotiated, worked out on their own, on their own merits, as to what the groups are providing, and whether they're maintaining and taking care of a town building, whether they provide, what type of service they're providing to the community. In terms of, I believe that wording, if I recall the discussions, ended up at a time when maybe we were, we were talking about the 50 cents a foot, and what that would mean if other MOUs were renegotiated and came in lower, that it would be possible then to look at this particular agreement and reduce it down. And I think one of the changes near the end of the discussions was to put it in at the $2 a year, which somewhat made that previous wording a little bit redundant, I think. Just in terms of what other groups are paying, I think there's, there's a couple of issues. With the yacht club, the Coburg Yacht Club, there's an existing lease with the yacht club for the actual land that the yacht club clubhouse building sits on. That's a lease that's been, at least in existence. The document I'm looking at was dated June 1st, 20, sorry, 1987, and it was renewed to, through to May 31st, 2027, I think was the most recent renewal. That particular lease was for $2 a year for the actual site that the building sits on. The yacht club, in addition to that, also pay property taxes on that building to the town. When it comes to the compound, the yacht club, I'm looking at invoices for the last three years to the Coburg Yacht Club, for it says land use compound, $850. They also pay a further $700 for use of garbage and recycling, and they pay, which really isn't pertinent to this discussion, but they pay an additional $3,500 for the reciprocal wall agreement, which my understanding is that if other yacht club members from around the province come in and use, they're allowed to tie up their, and so that's what the Coburg Yacht Club pays to provide that service to their fellow yacht club members around, around the lake. So that has remained consistent over the last three years. The Dragon Boat Club, as has been said, have been paying $2,225 based on 50 cents a square foot for 4,450 square feet, and in addition, have been paying $310 for a building of 120 square feet. That's been over the last three years.
Any further questions on the amendment that's on the floor? Counselor Charlie?
Just a couple of comments. Maybe if I go through, the length of the term certainly is something that I think there's flexibility there, and I'm open to a suggestion of two-year and then a five-year extension. We've discussed the compound rent and about equity in the area, particularly when this compound is going to be immediately next door to the Coburg Yacht Club compound, and how to deal with that in an equitable way. In terms of removing the two clauses, clause G and H, and I just want to be clear, it says here, as the property owners, the town is responsible for addressing any issues of flooding and/or weather-related damage that impacts the viability of the club compound. We were quite deliberate with that term, the viability of the club compound. So I think it was our understanding when drafting this that the town would not be replacing damaged equipment. It's just about the viability of the compound itself, because the current compound, due to high Lake Ontario water levels, is being impacted, so that it's no longer a viable space for their activities. So I would emphasize that term, viability of the club compound. And the next, section H, the club will notify the town as soon as possible if the club compound incurs any weather-related damage. And it's really a communication piece. It's not saying that the town is going to pay for any weather-related damage. And that's covered off in, there's a clause here, one second. 2E, no, not 2E, 2F, the club at their expense will provide all racks, storage, and program infrastructure needed to securely store necessary equipment. So that includes the building. That clause is meant to say the club is responsible for the cost of the building. So I hope that provides a little bit more clarity. But we could certainly add in, as Counselor Darling has suggested, you could add in wording that says that the club building would be built at the expense of the club, just to make it very clear. And then I would just make one suggestion to Counselor Darling's proposed amendment regarding if there were any discrepancies or disagreements, how that, how that would be resolved. And perhaps he would consider changing where the wording is, the final decision is the town's, perhaps it should be the final decision is council's.
Counselor Darling?
Yes, if I may, I'm just wondering with clause G, when you say the viability of the compound, I mean, we're moving the compound to get it out of the flooded area. If the flood, if something happens and the high water goes up higher than it currently has, we'll be setting new records, and none of our marina area, be it the yacht club compound, the dragon boat compound, or probably our parking lot, any of it. And so I'm wondering how we're going to maintain that viability if there's six, eight inches of water through that whole area.
Counselor Charlie?
Yes, it's a fair point, and I think we were chuckling during the negotiations about us all being in a lot of trouble if the water levels really were going to come up that high and impact the club in the proposed location. But it's really just to cover off any eventuality.
In that, in that context, I still stand by deleting those two. I mean, we're opening up a can of worms here that we may not be able to handle when the time comes. It'll be terrible for everybody if it did flood again beyond that point, but for us to say we can maintain the viability might mean starting at the Legion Village and building ramps all the way down to their compound, and that's just not reasonable. As far as Counselor Charlie's suggestion, I guess with my, my comment, or my suggestion that the town will have the final say, the town is council, so as far as when the, my last comment was, and further that the MOU be sent back to the CAO for wording of the final contract, I think the intent of what I'm saying is in each one of those amendments, and when the final draft comes back, if they wish to change that to council, I have no problem with that. I could change it in the amendment if that's necessary. I may refer to the clerk for that. I'm assuming the town and council are one, but if the wording gets, I can change that to council. It would be better to change, okay, I will change that.
So are you going to change the amendment on the screen with Counselor Darling's?
I'll change mine, but just to say council, and then you can change it now, and that's the one we'll use.
Are there any other edits that you would suggest after Counselor Charlie's comments? I see Counselor Burkett and then Counselor Beatty.
So I would agree with Counselor Darling on G for sure in regards to removing that. And after hearing Counselor Charlie on H, I would agree with her on that the club will notify the town as soon as possible. So I guess it's just, my understanding with that would be they notify it just so that we're aware that there's damages or something that could potentially, you know, be a hazard or whatever, and as long as they took safety precautions and that. So I think that is important to keep in H, just the way I read that now. But I would agree with Counselor Darling that G be removed in regards to, and like Counselor Charlie said, I hope the water doesn't come up that high, but we'll have other issues because with the proposed site, the yacht club would have big issues as well, so they would be underwater. So those are just my comments. And as far as the, I would agree with Counselor Darling, the keeping at the current rate with the, you know, the two years, with the, with the five, additional five year based on, that will lead to this end of, almost the end of this council, so I think that's good wording.
Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Counselor Darling. I just want to make sure that I was following the conversation. I noticed that if a resolution cannot be reached, municipal council have the final say, excuse me, in item five, in item three, Counselor Darling, should it say the same as well, if a resolution cannot be reached, the municipal council will have the final say?
That is correct. I thought that, yeah, the clerk was going to change both because they are the same statement.
Sure. And then I would echo Counselor Burkett's observation too about the importance of keeping 2H then in the.
Yes, and I would agree with Counselor Burkett on that context of it, that G be removed and H stays.
Did you have any changes to H?
No, it would stay as is.
Mr. Larmour, could you actually put G and H? I noticed you were copying there a few minutes ago. Could you actually put G on the screen and basically be removed, and then H in its entirety, so we can take a look at it on the screen before we bring this motion, amendment to a vote?
The motion that is up for debate is on the screen, the amendment, which is just to remove G and H totally, both clauses.
Yes, and with Counselor Darling's, go ahead, I just wanted to say that 2G, and then actually put 2G up there, and then deal with that as being removed, and then possibly any editing to 2H. Because I believe Counselor Burkett suggested an edit. No? Okay. Leaving it as is.
No, just where it says, or 2G will be removed, and clause 2G will be removed, and then that H can, H can be taken out of there, it will just stay, there will be nothing said about H.
And H out of there.
Clause 2G to be removed. That's it.
Mayor Henderson?
Yes, I've been listening to a very healthy debate, which is always wonderful. The only question I have to G, which is concerned, as the property owner, is no goal as CEO or someone else as a director, but as property owners, the town is responsible addressing any issues of flooding or other related weather damage. And I think of the issue, if we get significant flooding damage, there's no doubt, in my opinion, we're going to get a direction from GRCA or above. When we have contracts, my understanding has always been, the GRCA does not deal with our subgroups or MOUs or conditional agreements. Who they deal with is the corporation, the town of Coburg. So in this case, if we had what we might consider, not that I'm looking forward to this extreme flooding, my answer is, I don't see the GRCA giving a directive to any other club or any other organization. The directive is going to come directly to the town of Coburg, and ultimately, town of Coburg is going to be responsible for meeting those conditions. So I'm very confused why we're removing this, when ultimately, we may not like the answer, but if we get a directive from the GRCA, my understanding has always been, comes directly to the corporation. The corporation has to deal with the best method possible. Obviously, that will mean talks with clubs and otherwise, what that may mean, but the directive is to the town. So I'm very interested, why are we removing it?
Counselor Darling?
Well, my initial context was, which I had highlighted, and, and/or weather-related damage to the impacts of the viability of the compound, which I mentioned earlier, was the roof and whatnot, and again with the flooding. I just, I don't feel that line has to be there. If something drastic happens and the GRCA brings down a resolution of something, then we'll do what we have to do. But to have it in, to have those, that item in a memorandum of understanding, just to me, makes no sense.
Counselor Charlie?
I'm just wondering if it's possible to have a motion to divide this as an amendment. Perhaps the clerk could give some guidance, because it might be better that we vote separately on each proposed change.
Mr. Larmour?
To your chair members, counsel, I would suggest that, and I would even put on the floor for an option of counsel, to maybe just divide those sections that are most up for debate, that would be ones, and maybe incorporate the ones that you agree upon in this, and then separate the ones that are for further discussion in a single motion. That might be easier than doing one for each, or we can do it all for each motion separately on each clause.
How does everyone feel? Counselor Charlie, would you, are there any in there? You worked a lot on this memorandum that you would put in as a group, or would you prefer to have them all separated and voted on?
My preference would just be to vote on each change proposed, just for simplicity sake.
All right, Mr. Larmour, could you direct us there?
So if we can just, Chair, get a formal motion from the council member to divide this motion into, how many parts do we have, sorry? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Counselor Charlie, can you put that on the floor, please?
Yes, I would put forward a motion to divide this proposed amendment into eight parts.
Okay, I'm going to call for a vote on that amendment. All in favor? The motion is carried. Item number one is the term. The MOU is for an initial period of two years, March 1st, 2020, and ending February 28th, 2022, with a five-year extension, if agreed to by both parties. Any additional comments before I call for the vote? Seeing none, all in favor?
opposed.
Carried. Yeah. Okay. Item two, agreement for the provision of a club compound. Rent for the club will be at the current rate of 50 cents per square foot, plus HST for the term of this MOU. This sentence will replace clause 2B in the draft MOU. Any further comments? Counselor Charlie?
Yes, on this point, I would like to propose an amendment to the amendment, and the, it would be that the wording remains the same, except where it says, if the rental rate is renegotiated for other similar compounds in the area during this MOU, and the rate is higher, so we would say higher rather than lower, than this agreement, the new rate will be applied to the club. That way, we can achieve equity between the user groups using land in that area, but we can also increase the rates in tandem, and I think that's a more fair approach.
Mr. Larmour, can we put that amendment on, the amendment on the, and vote on that amendment before we vote on the amendment in front of us?
Yes, to your chair, just to be helpful, if I can get that written down by the member while I put on the floor, then I can. I put on the floor, then I can receive it, exactly the wording, and I'll put it up there as I receive it.
Counselor Charlie, do you have that written, or just something you? Okay. She's going to email it to you. Counselor Darling?
Just point of order, can we vote on the verbal, or does it have to be in writing?
As the clerk has just put it on there, it's pretty obvious. We can all read it. All in
We've heard the amendment, can we vote if it's defeated? We're wasting a lot of time
favor? Opposed? Motion is defeated.
here.
Well, we've, we've put a lot of time into this so far, so a couple more minutes isn't going to kill anybody. So back up to the agreement for the provision of the club compound. We don't need to reread
Just to my question, could we vote on the verbal?
Through the chair, to the member, of course you can. I think the deputy, the chair just asked me to put up there for all of council to see in the public, but you
it. I just did. Any other further questions? Okay, I'm going to call the motion. All in
can definitely do it verbally, for sure, if you understand the motion on the floor.
Yep, thank you.
favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. I would prefer to see it up there.
Just through to the clerk, I can't cut and paste from the document, I think, because
Two D, incorporated their expense into the clause of the draft MOU.
it's a PDF. Could you cut and paste, it is two B, as it is in the MOU?
If everyone has the motion in front of them, what that two D is?
And we just need to change one word in the last sentence. The word "lower" should be
Could we add that, Mr. Larmour, please?
changed to "higher."
Yeah, right there would be good. Any further discussion on this particular section? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion's carried. Two one, clause two G to be removed. Any further discussion on that? Counselor Charlie?
Yeah, just to be clear, this is the section, the town is responsible for addressing any issues of flooding. I do agree with the mayor on this point, although it's, it's quite unlikely that that location would be flooded. I do think we should make sure that the club is protected from any eventuality and that we have a responsibility in making sure that we are providing a viable location. So I would propose that it stays in.
Could you add it? Okay. Okay, well then we'll just, any further discussion on that? All in favor of being, of two G being removed? All in favor? Opposed? Motion is defeated. Item three, responsibility of the town, three A at the end of the clause, add, if a resolution cannot be reached, municipal council will have the final say. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion's carried. Item five, responsibilities of the club, five A at the end of the clause in the draft MOU, add, if a resolution cannot be reached, municipal council will have the final say. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried. Item seven, administration of this MOU, that the signing officer for the club be the board chair, president, the most senior signing authority with the organization. All in favor? Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
If I may ask for clarification perhaps to Mr. Davy? I know in a lot of our MOUs that is the board chair or president, but often we have another signing officer. So if something were to happen, that can be designated and the business can be carried over. So I'm just asking, Mr. Davy, would you suggest that it be wise not only have the signing be the board chair or president, but also another key officer? Because if that officer, something happens, we don't have anybody signed, can we carry on the business of the organization? I just want clarification, because in some cases, we have two signing officers with many of our agreements. So just a question of clarification.
Yes, Your Worship, I would think that they would also have a vice chair or a vice president of the organization, that in the event that the president or the chair was not available, would have the ability to step in and sign. So I think that would be covered.
Any further discussion on item seven? Seeing none. All in favor? Motion's carried. And number, yes, and further that the MOU be sent back to the CIO for wording of the final MOU with the agenda, be approval of the February 3rd, 2020 council meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carried. Now, there was just, yeah, the one defeat, I think. Okay. So we should have a clean amendment to vote on with the one defeated, two G, that was removed, correct, Mr. Larmour? Okay. Yeah. Yes, we're going to go to Counselor Darling's original motion as amended. We haven't voted on the entire motion. We voted individually. We go back to that? Okay, okay. Well, my motion that I read is no longer in the motion. Okay. All right. The action recommended that council authorize the interim chief administrative officer to execute the memorandum of understanding as amended between the corporation of the town of Coburg and the Coburg Dragon Boat and Canoe Club, as amended, sorry, as opposed to as attached. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried. Second item under general government is memo from the municipal clerk manager of legislative services regarding the town of Coburg taxi cab bylaw review and discussion on transportation network companies, TNCs, and the town of Coburg taxi cab public engagement report. The action recommended that council receive the report for information. And further, the council authorize staff to incorporate regulations through bylaw to regulate transportation network companies that provide an alternative transportation service within the town of Coburg in order to be prepared when this industry arrives in the town of Coburg. And further, the council approve the staff recommendations to modernize the taxi cab regulations that are outlined in the staff report, and authorize a preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to incorporate the changes into a new private transportation regulating bylaw. And further, the council directs staff to develop and present detailed options to council regarding regulations to help support the introduction of accessible taxi tabs in the town of Coburg, and directs staff to invite and engage new and existing businesses to operate accessible taxis in the town of Coburg. Discussion? Counselor Charlie?
Firstly, I would like to thank our clerk, Mr. Brent Larmour, for the work that he put into researching this very important report. But just for the sake of council's clarification and for, for members of the public, I wanted to direct a question through to Mr. Larmour. The proposed taxi fee structure in your report, can you just explain why or whether this is enough to enable taxi companies to operate at a profit? I'm just aware that taxi fees have been pretty stable for about 10 years, and I was wondering if you could explain that a little bit further.
Mr. Larmour?
To your chair, to the members of council, and members of council, the, just to briefly describe, there's two sets of fares, or there's two sets of rates that you'll see in the, in the report that are in the current bylaw set out. There's the taxi fare structure rates, which is the actual fare charged to passengers when they enter a taxi cab. And then in the, then there's an actual taxi fees for taxi cab owners and taxi cab drivers as well, too. So I can deal with the, the, the actual fees that taxi cab owners and driver, and what we charge the town for licenses for taxi cab owners and taxi drivers, they didn't change at all. So that's an easy one, just to talk about briefly. So we, we met with our taxi cab industry to talk about both sets of fares as well as fees, and we came to a good consensus and conclusion based on what's being presented tonight. Now to talk about the current fare structure, you'll see on page 12 of the report, there's eight different types of taxi fare rates. Those rates have actually been dwindled down to three in the new proposed taxi fare rates. There was maybe, I think, five or six that we presented to all of the owners in the attendance, and that happened, I think, last Tuesday. We met with all the owners. Everyone except one business wasn't there. I mean, what we did was, we, we discussed on the costs of running a taxi. Obviously, there's some costs that these business owners incur that, you know, the town sympathizes with, which is the cost of insurance to put these vehicles on the road, which is a business expense. But we, we, we did have a good conversation together and how, you know, we can help that and, and, and how, how, you know, how can the insurance company help to get these small businesses in a small town to get lower rates where they can be more equitable on the road. So that's something that we'll continue to work with our taxi cab owners, because that's something they have to bear themselves. What we can do, though, is under the section 156 of the municipal act, we can help regulate the fares and tariffs that taxi cabs charge when passengers entered into them. We, these fares haven't been updated since 2010. So we've been running on a fare system since 2010 with a pickup charge of $4.75. So that's when the taxi cab comes to you, right away, the meter is charged at $4.75, as well as a meter charge of $1.75 per kilometer. Those rates are staying the same. Since 2010 to 2020, or 2019, when we did most of the review, is that we're actually high. We're about just in par with all of the other municipalities and cities that are our size and higher. So these rates are, are pretty competitive for the taxi industry. And, and the taxi industry in Coburg didn't have an issue with keeping these. What they did have an issue with is the, the running costs of running a taxi. So the minute you pick up a passenger to the end of destination, there's costs that occur for them overhead. So you have to pay the driver. There's ongoing maintenance fees when running on the roads of Coburg. There's the cost of fuel. There's tons of those considerations that have to be constantly, you know, realized by the taxi street and these owners. So one of the things that we worked with them is to create a waiting slash running time while under engagement. So the introduction of this fee would be 75 cents per meter. So the minute the pickup charge is charged and the per meter charge, it will not only calculate distance per kilometer now, it will also have a waiting time and running time. What this will do is engage the minute the tariff, the fare meter is put into motion with the pickup and the kilometer charge, and will charge 75 cents per minute under 26 kilometers an hour that the taxi cab will be running. So what this helps to do is offset the costs of the traffic in the morning for the taxis that are in traffic, to help cost the fuel, the person in the seat, stopping and waiting for passengers to come. If they have other stops, five or six stops during the taxi cab fare, it'll constantly incur time. Railroads, stoplights, we have never incorporated this waiting time into our, and it is a cost to the taxi cab company and, and, and to have to incur costs when the meter isn't running. So what happened in the past, it was if they're stopped or going a low speed, nothing was being charged. There was no, the only thing they had was waiting time to charge, and they have to hit the meter for that. So this is a good introduction to help them to generate some extra revenue for that purpose. What residents will notice is when they get into taxi cab, a lot of these taxi cab companies have repeat passengers or customers, and they might go, I'll just take an example, from maybe Darcy Street to the Haas Abittle. What it was in the past is that that individual knew that it would cost this amount of money to go there every day, the same amount. What will happen now is there could be a minor change in the fare each time, depending on the traffic, depending on the waiting time, depending on the lights, all those. So it might be, it won't be that much, but what it will allow to do is the taxi owners to get back that time that puts into driving those passengers, just like any business to incorporate when people are working. The other addition we did, we got rid of the senior rate. This was something that we thought about for a while, and I presented to the cabs company. And what I thought about doing is, it was a bit of a, an issue for the actual drivers to switch that rate to do that in the car. So now there's a one-rate system, which you'll see in the delegations through Coburg Cab as well as Van Air Taxi. They came up and said they only wanted one fare, so we were able to deliver that. What we have introduced is a 10% discount for seniors on fares that are above $10. So. So proof of age is needed for this senior rate discount, and it's at the driver's discretion. So a lot of times, these seniors would come in the vehicle and say, I'm this age. And there was no proof, there's no ability for the driver to interpret that. So what we put it up as the discretion of the driver to determine whether or not they meet that age requirement. And this is a constant issue with the owners to get this sorted out. So we've given them a lot of different things to look for, for this senior age requirement. But we in the clerk's office, as a regulating body, will hear about the complaints if there was some issue with that, and we'd sort it out with the owner. And again, this discount will not be applied on fares below $10. In the taxi cab industry, the owners were happy with this. So other than that, we did on the actual report, we are able to give some different, our proposed rates for five kilometer and 10 kilometers. You see that we did that for the purpose of, to let the, to let the public know that we are introducing this different wage, rate change. So it would be on distance as well as time. So now two charges. And it shows the difference, which isn't that much. It will affect, though, when there's constant stops and these constant fares that are longer than these times, which are the times of waiting at a grocery store, waiting at those times, which the owners are paying the drivers to do that, to wait. So we've helped them to try to contribute and offset the costs for that.
Did you have a comment, that Counselor Burkett?
I was just going to comment to the other members of council, and Counselor Charlie. So I sat in the meeting with Mr. Larmour and the taxi cab owners, and I thought it was a very positive discussion and moving forward with the discussion on the rates. And, you know, example, was we used to have this charge where you would stop, and every stop you made, basically, you got a charge for it. So if you're faster at those stops, it's going to cost you less money in, in this new proposed thing. So if, you know, you're, somebody's hopping in the cab, for example, it's going to be cheaper for those people to kind of pick up as they go, because they're only acquiring that wait time versus before, it was a fee every time. So I encourage more people to share rides, or if you're picking up people. So, so I felt that was good, and, and people are getting paid for their time. Because, you know, you could be at a stop for a very long time at some spots, if, if you're waiting for some people. So I thought it was a very good conversation. I think another thing to protect the, the taxi cab companies as well as the, the consumers, as Mr. Larmour pointed out, there are, there is going to be that annual meeting, so we can have the discussion, and they can bring forth a proposal that council will obviously look at and determine whether we feel it's fair to both parties. And as there's the other clause in there, they could bring it forward earlier if they chose to. And I think.
I was just going to comment to the other members of council and councillor Charlie. So I sat in the meeting with Mr. Larmour and the taxi cab owners, and I thought it was a, a very positive discussion and moving forward with the discussion on the rates. And, you know, example, was we used to have this charge where you would stop, and every stop you made, basically you got a charge for it. So if you're faster at those stops, it's going to cost you less money in, in this new proposed thing. So if, you know, you're, somebody's hopping in the cab, for example, it's going to be cheaper for those people to kind of pick up as they go, because they're only acquiring that wait time versus before it was a fee every time. So I encourage more people to share rides or if you're picking up people. So, so I felt that was good, and, and people are getting paid for their time, because, you know, you could be at a stop for a very long time at some spots if, if you're waiting for some people. So I thought it was a very good conversation. I think another thing to protect the, the taxi cab companies as well as the, the consumers, as Mr. Larmour pointed out, there are, there is going to be that annual meeting so we can have the discussion, and they can bring forth a proposal that council will obviously look at and determine whether we feel it's fair to both parties. And as there's the other clause in there, they could bring it forward earlier if they chose to. And I think I learned a lot, it's surprising the amount of insurance and, and the costs that they, they do incur to run these types of businesses, and I commend them for doing so with those costs, so you can do the quick math in your head. And one note that I will say, we, we do have a fairly newer company too that's in Coburg from Port Hope there that's operating, and being a newer company with the high insurance rates, they still got into it. Now, obviously, they, there's troubles with starting a business of any kind, but the fact that they went into it, I felt that there's got to be some fairness to the rates, but, but at the same time, I, I think we've allowed enough conversations and avenues that we can, you know, adjust those if insurance raises go up, or as everyone knows, the gas goes up. So I, I do thank the clerk and his department for putting this together and having those conversations.
Councillor Charlie, did you have additional comments?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for that explanation, even though on the surface these are relatively small changes, I'm pleased to hear that they are enough to modernize our fare structure, and I really appreciate the level of consultation with the local taxi industry. The other part of the report that I was really intrigued by was the case study of Innisville and their transit system, and it sounds from the report that the experiment has been largely successful. And on that basis, I do have an amendment to put on the floor. And it's simply that we add one more paragraph to the recommended action, and the additional paragraph would say, "And further that council instruct staff to investigate the Innisville ride-sharing transit model and provide a report on its viability in Coburg to be presented to council by June 22, 2020."
Comments on the amendment, councillor Beatty?
Thank you councillor Charlie, you took my motion right off my computer. And I'm, just for clarification, I'm assuming that because that's referencing some of the detail that was included in the staff report to us as well, which I thought was good initiative on behalf of the staff to dive a little deeper, so you have my full support for that amendment.
Could advise council that there's a full story on the Innisville model in this month's municipal world, if you haven't already read it. Any further discussion on the motion, on the amendment, Mayor Henderson?
Yes, I appreciate the motion by councillor Charlie, and it's a good source, because you may or may not know, but Mayor Lynn Dolan, at one time previous, was our AMO president for all of AMO, now has worked herself out to be the mayor of Innisville. So just a wonderful connect in terms of progressive moves and a wonderful person to work with, so I certainly support that amendment to the motion.
Any further, oh, councillor Darling?
I just had a question from Mr. Larmour prior to the vote on the, this is to do with the amendment, but, sorry, Mrs. Barnes commented on the person at the hospital was unable to get a cab, and when I was reading it, I wrote down a question, are taxi cabs required to be in service 24/7 in, in, in the community or in this memory? I didn't see it anywhere, so.
Mr. Larmour?
If you chair to the member of council, it's not a requirement to have a taxi business to open at 24/7. We kind of leave it up to a business decision, like most of our, our provisions in the bylaw. We would love to have them open 24/7, obviously, and have an accessible taxi cab, but we, we never want to put them out of business, and, and we want to make sure they can, but I know right now that we have constant contact with our taxi owners and a, a fair bit of them, and, and it's really good to have, we're now switching to a real good engagement between us and them. And I'm really hoping, and they're, they are with these changes happy, that we have listened, that we have put stuff in place to show them that we're listening, and we've opened our doors to let them know that anything that we can do to help them be successful and provide that extra service and transportation to the town and our residents we're happy to help with.
Thank you, Mr. Larmour.
Any further comments before I call a vote on the amendment? Does anyone need it to be reread? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, I'm going to call the vote on councillor Charlie's amendment, all in favor. Motion is carried. Councillor Charlie, if you would give me that amendment, I will reread the original motion. Action recommended that council receive the report for information, and further that council authorize staff to incorporate regulations through bylaw to regulate transportation network companies that provide an alternate transportation service within the town of Coburg in order to be prepared when this industry arrives in the town of Coburg. And further that council approve the staff recommendations to modernize the taxi cab regulations that are outlined in the staff report, and authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to incorporate the changes into a new private transportation regulating bylaw. And further that council direct staff to develop and present detailed options to council regarding regulations to help support the introduction of accessible taxi cabs in the town of Coburg, and direct staff to invite and engage new and existing businesses to operate accessible taxis in the town of Coburg. And further that council instruct staff to investigate the Innisville ride-sharing transit model and provide a report on its viability in Coburg to present it, to be presented to council by June 22, 2020. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor. Motion is carried. The third item under general government is a memo from the municipal clerk manager of Legislative Services regarding the Court Security and Prisoner Transportation (CSPT) program agreement. The action recommended that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to authorize the mayor and municipal clerk to execute an agreement between the town of Coburg and Her Majesty the Queen in Right of Ontario, as represented by the Solicitor General, substantially in the form attached as Appendix B to the staff report, and that all ancillary and associated documents to secure provincial funding allocation for 2020 Under Court Security and Prisoner Transportation Program (CSPT) administered by the Solicitor General. Any comments from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor. Motion is carried.
Mr. Larmour?
Next, Your Worship, we have Planning and Development Services, and we have Chair councillor Nicole Beatty.
Thank you, Mr. Larmour. The first is a memo from the Director of Planning and Development regarding the County of Northumberland Town of Coburg Affordable Housing Strategy, AHS. Before I read that, recommend action, I just think it's important to acknowledge the initiative of the planning staff, because we received the presentation from the county as such. The fact that the department went above and beyond to co-align and take initiative to bring this forward to council, I think is, is to be applauded. So with that said, action recommended is that council receive the report for information. Further that council support the County of Northumberland's initiative to develop comprehensive strategies for lower-tier municipalities to aid in the creation of new affordable housing units across the county. And further that council endorse the framework of recommended actions and programs as outlined in the Town of Coburg Affordable Housing Strategy. And direct staff to work collaboratively and in partnership with the County of North umberland and its member municipalities, other levels of government, and key stakeholders to implement the strategy to the fullest extent possible. And further that staff provide council with an annual report which summarizes the progress of the implementation of the strategy. Are there any questions or comments? Councillor Charlie?
Through you to Director McGlashan, I'm not sure if this is, if I should direct this question to you or not, but it's not so much a question, it's just a comment, that I'm still struggling slightly with the definition of affordable housing used in the report, because the report acknowledges that even affordable housing under this definition would not be affordable for low-income families. I think part of the answer I'm looking for has been provided by the consultant through her presentation earlier this evening, but I'm just wondering if I can get your take on it. How do we best, how do we best create the kind of affordable housing for individuals who are most acutely in need? I know the consultant mentioned the tiered approach, which might be what I'm looking for, but why is the definition of affordable housing so broad and not entirely affordable for everyone?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's a very good question, and it may be something I may have to get back to you on councillor Charlie, but in terms of the definition of affordable housing, it's a widely accepted, used definition in the provincial policy statement, that anything greater than 30% of your gross household income is, is not affordable. So there are various data sets in the, both strategies that will identify where, you know, low, moderate, and, and high-income earners are in the whole spectrum, and what is affordable to those particular deciles, I guess you call them. So it's, it is, it's not an exact, I think, answer I can get to you right away, but I think it's, it's, the challenge is, is that most of the new units that are being created in, in the municipality in terms of rental are at average market rent and above, which puts them beyond most moderate and all low-income earners. So there is a challenge there to try to make new units affordable for that demographic or that household demographic. So a lot of that in terms of the Affordable Housing CIP is, you look at that tiered approach, where if there are units that are being proposed for the lower income threshold, that those units be targeted a higher amount of incentive, let's say, to try to get those on stream, whereas units that may be in the moderate to upper end of that may not get as much. So I think, I think you're correct, we're, we're still working on that in terms of the CIP process and what areas we can target, and it could be, as Ms. Martell indicated, it could be for, you know, emergency housing, it could be for seniors' housing. I believe some of the input at the Public Open House indicated possibly new, new persons, new immigrants to the Coburg area that may be targeted. So I think that's a question that is very much on the mind of, of our group and our, our staff group and the consulting team, as to what really will create the best sort of bang for the buck in that sense.
Thank you, Director McGlashan. Councillor Charlie?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank you for that answer. I know working definitions, there needs to be a working definition, and sometimes they're not perfect, and I still appreciate there's some good initiatives outlined in this strategy, so I would support this motion.
Director McGlashan, if I may?
Yes, if I may, that kind of leads to another discussion with respect to what, what rents are affordable, are considered affordable. So typically, the federal CMHC considers 80% of average market rent as being affordable, typically for low-to-moderate income earners. However, housing service managers across the province, such as our, our County of North umberland and others in, in Ontario, have set a different affordability rate, just to try to stimulate the provision of any rental housing, let alone affordable. So in those cases, some municipalities, like Hamilton, I believe, have actually indicated that 125% of average market rent is affordable, just to try to help, again, stimulate the introduction of more rental housing in the community. So Northumberland County, at this present time, I believe is aligned with CMHC in terms of 80% of, of AMR, but I believe they are looking at potentially bumping that to 100%. So average market rent would be around $1,020, based on 2018 data. So that, that number certainly is subject to change. So not only are there definitions of what is affordable to people, but is also there are different definitions of what are affordable rents as well. So again, we're diving into those details through our CIP process, and that's something that will, next, the next phase will illustrate to council what areas we're going to be targeting and looking at as a high priority.
Thank you again for the, for their insight. Any other questions or comments? Oh, I was doing a full span. Your Worship.
Councillor Beatty, I'd just like to reiterate, support what Director McGlashan stated, just to make council aware, we're going through a transformation at the county. We have our own service manager through Northumberland County, but they are going through their own organization on a geographical basis. The word is, we could be moving to a centralized, bigger service manager out of Peterborough, but the area may be extended to Hallowberton and Muskoka. So when we start to look at that issue and how the, they're just meeting in that new geographical area, what that may look like, so as the service managers meet for all the different areas, we may end up over this next year, in fact, through discussion with the new model. So to your point, that's all evolving as we sit in this chamber, and I can't give you any more, because they're just starting to have those, those larger talks with Peterborough being maybe perhaps the central center. We'll learn through social services as this evolves over the next year, so who knows? It could become a, another word, maybe a Hamilton model, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Your Worship, for highlighting that, and I think it's an excellent time to be evolving together at both levels of, of government. Any additional questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the vote, all those in favor? None? Carried. Thank you very much. Item number two is a memo from the Senior Planner of Development regarding the detailed plans for draft plan of subdivision clearance for East Village Phase 5 and Gage Engineering JMCD Holdings. The action recommended is that council receive and refer the detailed plans for a draft plan of subdivision clearance for East Village Phase 5 to the Planning Department for a report. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item number three is a memo from the Senior Planner of Development regarding a service agreement for 163 Synonym, Synonym, it's the one street I can't pronounce, Street Coburg, and this is for Catherine Anne Spavens. The action recommended is that council receive the report for information, and further that council authorize the preparation of a bylaw to be endorsed and presented to council for adoption at a regular council meeting to authorize the mayor and municipal clerk to execute a severance agreement with Catherine Spavens for the development of a new residential lot on the property known municipally as 163 Synonym Street, subject to the finalization of details by municipal staff and applicable agencies. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, call the vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Seeing none, it's carried? Thank you. Item number four is a memo from the Secretary of the Heritage Advisory Committee regarding a motion of support for a natural heritage waterfront park at the Coburg Harbour. Point of clarification to the clerk, I don't have to read the, the recommended motion, do I? No, thank you. Action recommended is that council receive the memo for information purposes. Seeing none, all the, sorry, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Item number five are the notice of hearings of the Committee of Adjustment and Planning Staff Reports regarding file number A08 for 415 King Street West Coburg. This is for Glover Co Inc. and AMR Investments Inc. My apologies, it's file number A0819. And for file number A0819 for 30 James Street West Coburg, this is for Catherine Taylor. And the action recommended is that council receive the notices and reports for information purposes. Questions or comments? Councillor Darling? So the second one should be file number A0919. Okay. Okay. All right. Questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. And final number six is a memo from the Secretary of the Heritage Advisory Committee regarding the 2019 Town of Coburg Heritage Conservation Awards, and the action recommended is that council receive the memo for information, and further that council formally award the recipients of the 2019 Town of Coburg Heritage Conservation Awards at the February 18th Committee, February 18th, 2020 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Any questions or comments? Before calling the vote, I'd just actually like to extend my thanks to the mayor, who actually taught me about this important commemoration that we do here at council through his experience with planning and heritage, and thank you to the Heritage Committee for taking the time to... time to honor these exceptional homeowners who are celebrating the heritage character of our beautiful town. So any questions or comments? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Carried.
Next, your worship, we have Public Works Services, and we have Chair Counselor Brian Darling.
Your worship, point of order, may I ask for a five-minute stretch break? The council meetings already won ahead of me.
Oh, I can see that. Is there any issue with the five-minute? Seeing none, all in favor? Carried. We'll come back in five minutes. And where we last left off, I believe we're still at, you're finished, thank you, so we're now at Public Works.
Thank you, your worship. I have a memo here from the Director of Public Works regarding the unfinished business item, Wheels Transit Options for Boarding and Disembarking. The action recommended, the council endorse the following options recommended by staff for consideration in the 2020 budget deliberations. Option two, retrofit current vehicle with an inline assist winch, and option three, retrofit current vehicle with grab and stability bar. And further, that option one being to purchase a new vehicle to use as a main wheels bus be referred to the Accessibility Advisory Committee for further consideration upon receiving confirmation of transit funding for rolling stock. Any questions regarding to this? Mayor Henderson?
The only question I have, and I raised it just because of going to different areas recently, I know we have ramps, I understand ramps, but I have seen a lot of buses in other municipalities other than Coburg that, I guess they're called lift, because the ones I've seen lately, they come out, and they're like threefold. It comes out and it kind of goes like a small elevator, and then it escalates up. I don't know if that's called a ramp, I need some help from Public Works, or is that technically now defined as a lift? I hope you know what I'm meaning, like, they came out, I was there the other night, one came out, second one came out, a third one came out, and then they were able to wheel up. So when I see that in other bus services, is that still considered a ramp, or is that considered a lift?
Director Wills?
Through the chair to your worship, I believe that those are still ramps, just a different form, format of a ramp, is my understanding.
Follow-up, Mr. Mayor?
If I may, and in listening to Troy's presentation, because obviously he uses the buses a lot amongst others, I got the sense that he was saying, at least maybe he wasn't saying, I need clarification from Troy at some point, a lift seems to meet the needs of more users than a ramp. And if that's the case, if I was listening correctly, I'm just wondering, when we do our comparisons, are we comparing those that offer lift options and what the comparables would be, so we could see not only what ramps cost on buses, but what's the difference between a ramp and a lift type of wheel transit? Because personally, I don't have any idea. I guess a question to you, Director, has that ever been looked at as a comparable?
Director Wills?
Through the chair, so I, I do, there was a little paragraph under section six of my report, the second paragraph of option two, that explains why at this time we haven't considered a lift option. The town is part of the Metrolinks Procurement Initiative program, where they source buses through many municipalities so that we all get a discounted price because we buy not just one for the town, but many other towns will buy the same sort of bus. So they're not providing a lift option anymore. A lot of places are getting away from lifts. My understanding, and I'm not going to pretend that I'm an expert on this subject matter at all, we're all still researching, and this report was not intended to decide what kind of bus we go forward with at this time, it's just that I'm showing you the option that Metrolinks is providing us right now, and that when we do, hopefully when we receive funding from the federal government, then we can start really diving into the details of what bus is best for us. But my understanding at this time is that buses that have lifts don't also have ramps. So it's, you get a lift and a set of stairs, or you get a ramp. I know, it seems, I don't quite understand it myself either, because we, people that are on a lift, obviously those in wheelchairs, it's helpful for them, but those that are in walkers, it's not. They have to sit in a chair to go up the lift, otherwise it's fairly unstable to be standing on a lift with your walker. It's not, whether it's not permitted, it's very unsafe, but they can't use the stairs. So they're forced to sit in a wheelchair to go up the lift. So at this time, we are hoping that the winch system helps those in wheelchairs that are having trouble getting on our wheels bus, and that still allows all of our other users who have walkers to get on the bus themselves as well. So there's a lot more users that are using the Wheels Transit system that have walkers and mobile assisted devices versus those that might need a lift. That's where I'm at at this point, but again, not trying to make any decisions about the type of bus that we need right now, just that those are the ones that are available to us right now through Metrolinks, and if we receive funding, we'll absolutely go through a much more in-depth process of choosing a vehicle.
Any further questions? Councilor Charlie?
This is more of a comment. I just want to clarify that there was a motion passed in November, and the motion was to sustain a true door-to-door level of service, including driver assistance as required. I just want to clarify that I don't believe it was my intention or council's intention to have that interpreted as drivers acting as attendants or personal support workers, and as we've heard from the delegation this evening, and I've heard from other users of the service, those individuals are not looking for personal support workers paid for by the town. But what I see a need for through this report is a much clearer definition of the kind of assistance that the driver will provide, and that comes through a policy. And Director Wills has said here that regarding driver assistance, the policy has remained in draft format, and driver assistance is not being clearly defined. And I think the way to move forward is for us to get that policy drafted, brought to council, approved, for us to use that process to have a community-wide conversation and extensive consultation with the users, to make sure we clearly explain the, the level of service that drivers will provide, so that users can also go and make their own arrangements if they need additional assistance, they, they can go and do that. And as Mr. Mills pointed out, I just had a look at the TTC, just as an example, they've got here a statement, drivers will escort you from the vehicle to the first set of accessible doors at your destination. That's the kind of detail we need in a policy. Or another example, one-step policy, drivers will only take your manual wheelchair up or down one step or a curb at the point of pickup or at your destination. So we can see the TTC is in fact providing a level of assistance. We need to, like so many other municipalities, define that through a policy. So I've put for, I've got a, an amendment drafted here, just to find it in my paperwork. And I just want to say that I appreciate the suggestions of a winch and a grab bar. I support the, the action recommended. I would just like to add this paragraph. And further, that council instruct staff to draft an accessible transit service policy in consultation with the Accessibility Advisory Committee and the Proposed Accessibility Coordinator for presentation to council by June the first, 2020. And further, that the issues raised by the delegations from Troy Mills and the Golden Plough Lodge Family Council be considered when drafting the policy. So I think those delegations have raised a few issues, I think it's important for us to just consider those issues as the policy is being drafted.
If I may, Counselor, pardon me, Director Wills, is June sufficient time for you to, you've got another one that was presented earlier, do they want in June as well, so?
My only reservation is, we don't know when we might have a staffer available, the Accessibility Coordinator, when they might be on board with us or not, so maybe we could have a, set a deadline when we do have that person on board.
Councilor Charlie?
Just to clarify, I did consult with the clerk about the timeline for hiring an accessibility coordinator, and this position is pending approval in the 2020 budget, so I've put Proposed Accessibility Coordinator. Hopefully, that, that is finalized on February third. But if the clerk could comment on the timeline, and I think it is important that that coordinator is involved in drafting the policy, because they would be working on the town-wide accessibility policy and multi-year plan.
To Chair, to member of council and council, we have a long list of priorities for an accessibility coordinator corporate-wide, through the senior directors and staff as well as managers, and this is on the top of the list, and I spoke with our HR officer tonight, and she knows that there is a, a need and importance to hire this position, so we're hoping by the end of March, or the start of March, if approved by council, which will give them almost three months to try to get this developed. Myself, as well as Director Wills, have, have gathered a lot of information and have taken a lot. There'll also need to be, you know, an open house and public, direct communication to those that use the service to get an idea of what needs to be done, and probably a survey from other municipalities, maybe some visits, but I, if, if, if we can't meet that deadline based on procedures and hiccups and kind of the process, we'll report back to council, let you know. But the benefit of this position is the sole responsibility will be to look at accessibility in the town of Coburg. Once we look at this process, we'll look outward to the entire town, but we, we, this, this will allow someone to sit down and go through these all and, and really go line by line with the AODA, what we're trying to accomplish with, staff currently, myself and the director have been trying to juggle this with everything else, so we're meeting the minimum standards for it, but we can definitely do a lot better, and this position will be perfect to get that all together and put this forward.
So Mr. Larmour, are you saying you're having, going to have somebody in place by March first, or just the fact that you'll have them ready to hire by March first?
We're hoping, if all goes good, to have some in the position near the end of March.
All right, so back to my initial question, would June be acceptable for a report? March, April, May, June, three months, new person on. Would Counselor Charlie be willing to push that date a little bit ahead, new person involved, just getting into the job and to develop that? And I mean, then we're getting into June, you're getting, June, July, August, you're getting into summer holidays, I just.
I appreciate the suggestion. I think that, I think that we should actually keep it a slightly ambitious deadline, because the position is a twelve-month position, and there's a lot to achieve, I think we need to, to, to push the, the workload slightly, but I, I would expect that council will be flexible if, if staff come back and say that the timeline hasn't worked out, we could certainly extend it.
Okay. Everybody's heard the amendment, any questions on the amendment? Now call for the vote on the amendment, all in favor? Carried. Any further questions on the original motion with the amendment?
You have to read it, just point of order once again with the amendment.
If I could just for a point of order, ask the clerk, is it necessary each time that we reread the amendment when everybody has it in front of them, or is this just for the, for the benefit of the community at large?
Through, to the chair, there is no requirement, but it helps me as well as council to have it incorporated into it, that way for the official record, I can record that the minutes has been read.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the memo from the Director of Public Works regarding unfinished business item, Wheels Trans Options for Boarding and Disembarking, the action recommended that council endorse the following options recommended by staff for consideration in the 2020 budget deliberations. Option two, retrofit current vehicle with an inline assist winch, and option three, retrofit current vehicle with a grab and stability bar. And further, that option one be, being to purchase a new vehicle to use as a main wheels bus be referred to the Accessibility Advisory Committee for further consideration upon receiving confirmation of transit funding for rolling stocks. And further, that council instruct staff to draft an accessible transit service policy in consultation with the Accessibility Advisory Committee and the Proposed Accessibility Coordinator for presentation to council by June twentieth, pardon me, June first, 2020. And further, that the issues raised by the delegations from Troy Mills, the Golden Plough Lodge Family Council be considered when drafting the policy. Any further questions? Deputy Mayor?
Just wanted to remind council that the fifty-five-hundred for this motion was approved during our two-day budget deliberation, and it is already in the budget.
Right. Any further questions? All in favor? Carried. My next is a memo from the Environmental Services Manager regarding the awarding of a contract for bio, biosolids haulage. The action recommended that council award the contract for biosolids haulage to EnviroLand Services for the 2020 and 2021 haulage seasons at the lowest cost, eleven dollars per cubic meter. Any questions in regard to this issue? Now call the vote, all in favor? Opposed, offended, carried.
Mr. Larmour?
Next, your worship, we have Parks and Recreation Services, and we have Chair Counselor Emily Charlie.
Item one, memo from the Secretary of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee regarding the Urban Forest Management Plan, Community Stewardship Coordinator Position. The action recommended is that council receive the memo for information purposes. Are there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Item two, memo from the Secretary of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee regarding an increase in the 2020 budget for tree planting. Action recommended that council receive the memo for information purposes. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? It's carried.
Mr. Larmour?
Next, your worship, we have Protection Services, and we have Chair Counselor Aaron Burkett.
I have a memo from the Municipal Clerk, Manager of Legislative Services regarding the Joint Animal Control Municipal Services Board Notice of Agreement Termination. The action recommended that council receive the report for information purposes, and further that council provide direction to staff to exercise the town's option to withdraw from the board and terminate participation in Joint Animal Control Municipal Services Board program by providing twenty-four months written notice pursuant of section thirty point four of the Joint Animal Control Municipal Services Board Agreement, and further that council direct the municipal clerk to send correspondence to the Joint Animal Control Municipal Services Board to inform the board that two-year notice has been established by the town of Coburg to take effect on the final resolution passing date, and further that council direct the municipal clerk to provide a report to council within two years, within the two-year notice period, and prior to the exiting of the agreement to explain and provide an overview of the proposed operational model by the town's bylaw enforcement department in order to provide all animal control enforcement internally for the residents of the town of Coburg. A sec. So I'll just briefly speak to this. So in the year being on the board, we've been trying to move forward with how to better deliver the service for better value and things like that, and what the clerk and myself and the mayor have, through discussions, have determined that what we're getting out of the, the service is no longer in the town's best interest, and we need to move forward. So this is, this is a push to the board to move a little quicker on things that we are working on. We are, we are in the midst of some, some negotiations, but I think what it really helps is, we're very different from Port Hope, Hamilton Township, and Alma Coleman, because of the nature of where we are. are. And the services that we require are far, far different than the other municipalities. And I will say that the, I'd like to thank Mr. Larmour for the work that he has put in with writing tickets and explaining things to the board through his department, and really taking the lead on, I feel, some items that have been dropped by the Municipal Control Board staff. And I think this is the right direction. And I'm open for any comments or questions from members of council. Counselor Darling?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Burkett. In reading this report, I can see where you're going with it. I'm just curious, is there any option after you submit your, your recommendation to leave the board in the two-year notice period, if we get a proposed operational model from the town, and for some reason, it's not acceptable and whatnot, is there something in the board's governance model that says we can withdraw that and continue with the board?
Yes, my understanding is Port Hope has done this in the past, and then they withdrew. So this isn't the, we aren't the first one to do this. I think we just need the push to move towards a better model. Because we are the, paying the most out of the four municipalities.
Okay, it's just good to know that we will have an option either or at that time. Thank you. Your Worship?
Yes, I'd like to just support the comments of Counselor Burkett. We've had this discussion not for one year. It actually started during my role of Deputy Mayor. That was four years ago. So now entering year five, I have had discussions with each mayor affected. They themselves realize the system operational is not working as well as it should, certainly for them as well. This, I'm hoping, with council support, will spur further discussions. It will allow us to have outside-the-box discussions of what the future holds. And I can tell you, the mayors are anxious to have this discussion. They know that we might need a new model, especially if Town of Coburg is not at the table, because we bring a significant amount of money. It's well over $106,000 each and every year, and actually more when you include bylaw. So when you look at the input to the output, we do have to look at a different model. Each mayor is aware of that. And I'm hoping with your support, that gives us a two-year time period to have that professional dialogue and create a model that, in my opinion, not only works for the Town of Coburg, but hopes it could work towards creating new partnerships with new organizations. And as Mr. Larmour said, still very much meet our animal control enforcement within and on behalf of the Town of Coburg. Personally, I believe this can be done more efficiently and effectively, and I'll make that statement. And I believe at the end of the day, we can save money. So to me, it's worth the discussion. So I'm hoping council will consider supporting this motion. Again, I want to be clear, we have to keep status quo per our contract, per our memorandum, for a full two-year period. We receive legal advice on that issue. We're adhering to that. But more importantly, I think it spurs what we all want, which is new conversation.
Thank you, Worship. Are there any other questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed if any? It's carried.
Mr. Larmour?
Next, Your Worship, we have Arts, Culture and Tourism Services, and we have Chair Counselor Adam Bureau.
Memo from the Secretary of the Sustainability and Climate Change Advisory Committee regarding the SCCAC's request to support the advisory committees in the Town of Coburg. Action recommended, council endorse the comments of the Sustainability and Climate Change Advisory Committee and authorize a request, sorry, and authorize and request other advisory committees of the Town of Coburg to work with the SCCAC to discuss climate emergency we are facing, and to work with the SCCAC to develop guidance on climate crisis measures the respective advisory committees would consider when fulfilling their mandate. And before I open up to discussion, I just want to say, it is in the work plan that council already approved. And this is an ambitious club for committee, sorry, and they just want to get to work. So any comments or discussion? Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Counselor Bureau, and thank you to your committee for bringing this forward. And I recognize it's in their work plan. And while I appreciate the collaborative spirit of the committee's recommendation, however, I believe it is slightly premature at this time, considering the fact that the ICIP will involve all corp, I believe, will involve all corporate departments, and that the contract position pending budget approval next week associated with this project will most likely be fully integrated into all levels of the town's faculties and functions that pertain to sustainability policies and procedures. In fact, the work ahead will strengthen, enhance our green practices and beyond. I'm also with the understanding that when the committee terms of references were recently reviewed and revised, that they were done so to incorporate sustainability within each advisory mandate. If fully believe that we need to let the ICIP project and its associated processes that's before us for approval and budget next week, takes this course in 2020 and onboard the recommendations and work plan that will, that I believe will resolve from it. With that in mind, I will not support this motion at this time.
Any other discussion? Yes, Counselor Darling?
Thank you. I had some trouble with this motion here. I just, I didn't look into it to the depth that Counselor Charlie did. And I fully agree with what she's saying. I find that the, it's, I'm not sure what the mandate is of a committee, and if, whether they're overstepping their bounds and getting in. So I'm, I'm, I'm just having a little trouble accepting this one. So I, at this time, I don't think I can support it.
Counselor Burkett?
At this time, would, Counselor Bureau, would you consider maybe receiving this report for information purposes? And until, obviously, the plan, we approve the budget and we start work on that?
I would, if we didn't, if council already didn't approve this. Like, it's in their work plan, and council already approved this in their work plan. I understand that, that it may be intrusive to other committees, but it is looking just through the lens of sustainability and climate change. That's all it is. And they just, any, before they even go to any committees, all the recommendations are going to come to council first anyways. So this is just part of their work plan, and they're doing what council instructed them to do. They made their work plan. They want to help with the climate change through other committees. I understand the ICSP will, is going to be incumbent of that, but that's not for another two years. So to me, I think I'm going to leave this motion on the floor. I think it's worthy. And that's, that's what I'm going to say. Counselor Charlie?
It's an interesting issues raised by other members of council. But having worked with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, there is a lot of overlap between the work of that committee and the Sustainability and Climate Change Advisory Committee. And I know the chairs have met and discussed their, their work plans. So much has to do with sustainability in Parks and Rec. I can think water bottle, water bottle filling stations, tree planting, LED lighting, new parks, idling vehicles on the pier. So I'm comfortable with this motion. I think it's, I think it's good that we don't have too many silos, and that the advisory committees are speaking to each other.
Counselor Beatty?
Thank you, Counselor Charlie, for again reiterating that collaborative spirit. And I think it's really great to see the initiatives of the chairs of the respective advisory committees meeting offline and, and, and working. And I, I think that can work as it is, and then those certain members can report back to the respective committees. I'm just going to play devil's advocate on the theme of collaboration. And I've already seen a little bit in my first term in working with my own committees is, I'm worried that by our advisory committees starting to cross their mandates at their respective meetings, agendas are being prolonged, possible distractions, although that might not be the intention. And the business of our respective committees are getting prolonged, which will then impact, I believe, our work as council. And so I think there's opportunities for committees to meet offline, have delegations when responsible, when required. Committees have every opportunity to bring things forward to council, participate in public engagement at the meetings, and open houses, and comment that way. And a lot of them do intersect. So I'm just going to have to, I think our advisory committees have to stay focusing on their, their mandates. And yeah.
So then, my question is, if council approves work plans for the committees, which we did, so basically, when they want to do some work, is that the time that we shut them down? Or should it have been during the work plan? Because it's kind of unfair to the committee to be, to do all this work in a work plan, and then council approve it. So when they go to do work, we shut it down. I don't understand, I don't, I think that's, that's wrong. We should support this. Counselor Darling?
Yes, if, and again, you read these work plans, and it's hard to, with a little verb there, to anticipate what is actually meant. It's, it's quite of a broad statement. I was just going to ask if you have the work plan in front of you, if you could read that one little context that was in the work plan.
Support other advisory committees to carry out their mandate through the lens of climate emergency as we are facing. Start date, January 2020, completion date ongoing. Number one, meet with each advisory committee to discuss climate emergency we are facing, and invite them to work with the SCC to develop a guidance on climate crisis measure to consider when fulfilling their mandate. And two, assist in finding documents to support advisory committees to more fully understand the climate mitigation measures application to their mandate. I keep going. Because it keeps, let me just, I'll keep going. Guidance documents developed jointly with each committee. More cross pollination will occur, and, all right, maybe I shouldn't have. You get the gist. It's basically going to each committee, asking the chair, they may not even do anything. Their committees may already have enough sustainability and climate action measures where there is no work. But this is part of the work plan, and that's what they decided to do. Counselor, or Beatty, sorry.
I know what Bureau and Burkett go through, but I'll take it as, I will take it as a compliment. In all, in all seriousness, and I, and I appreciate you raising the point about supporting and approving the work plan, Counsel Bureau. I obviously supported the work plan at the time. Like work plans, though, they're a fluid and organic document. And the reality has changed a lot since we received this late last year. If anything, I, I think, and I hope this committee has been heard, and their advocacy and initiative obviously has resulted in the climate emergency statement and the ICIP. And as a counselor, I'm really trying to do my due diligence in watching all of these urgent priorities and active committees coming before us and the motions we receive. And, and I'm worried that we're having a lot of movement in various lanes. And I'm actually really excited about this coordinated approach, corporate department-wide with the town, with the ICIP. We're dedicating a staff person to it. And I, I really just ask council colleagues to think, what is the most logistically coordinated and efficient way to guide this important work forward? And I can't predict what the ICIP or the consultant's going to bring forward with it, or the contracted position. But we spent a lot of time on this. Our advisory committees are volunteer-based. I can't speak for your committees. Our agendas are packed, and we're focused on that mandate. And I really want to trust the process for 2020. And so on that ground, again, I, I believe in the collaborative intent of this committee and their ambition. But I have to stand the ground that I think we, we approve the process in place with the ICIP. It's mandated to be town-wide and intersect on, on all levels of operations and sustainability. And I just ask council colleagues to, to reflect on that.
Counselor Charlie?
I think this is a, this is a new committee, and there clearly are some growing pains. But if we want to be serious about integrating sustainable practices into all areas of our operations, I think we're going to have to give this committee the freedom to do that. However, I think if there are any challenges with the working methods of the committees, and I think collectively, we're all looking for ways to make our advisory committees more efficient, more effective. Maybe the best way to address that would be through the advisory committee terms of reference, where we can make some adjustments there. And there is always, sometimes a bit of a trade-off between consultation and engagement. It tends to impact productivity. So we do, to Counselor Beatty's point, need to keep our eye on that balance. But I would advocate for an adjustment, perhaps to the terms of reference for the advisory committee, rather than to their remit as the motion is proposed.
Okay. I got to say something. You know, I find it funny that this, this committee's been doing a lot of work and working hard. A lot of motions that I have brought from this committee and supported, I've brought back to the committee or been withdrawn. This is a work plan. And if anybody didn't like the work plan at that time, or the stuff that was in it, then we should have voted it out then. But nobody did. So this committee's been working on this for over, I believe, over two months now. And now we're just going to stop the work plan. So basically, I don't know how to move forward with this committee. Because they're doing the work that council approved, comes to council, gets rejected. I don't know how to, I don't, I don't know what else to do with that. So I'm going to support this motion. And if there's any other discussion, I'll call a vote. Okay? Motion or to support the motion?
To clarify, what are we voting on? Is it Counselor Beatty's amendment, or the rec? Okay.
So, all in favor? Okay. So, all in favor? Those opposed? Carried.
Mr. Larmour, that takes us to, I believe, unfinished business. And if I could ask you just to speak to the traditional land acknowledgement statement, that would be helpful based on our dates.
Yes, through you, Worship to council, we obviously are late on the traditional land acknowledgement statement to be read at council meetings. The clerk's office has been relatively busy, as you can see from the output of reports and everything that's going on. So we have sent a letter to Alderville, and we're trying to, to follow up. This is tasked with one of my departing staffs actually doing this, this report, which I'll have to take over. And there was, I think, a meeting set up. So I'll have to take a hold of this. In order to give you an idea of the deadline date, I don't have it. Can I, am I able to bring this back to regular council with an adjustment on the date, just for I can go and think about it and bring back an accurate?
Most certainly, Mr. Larmour, behalf of council, because I know you've been inundated. And I know that council received the note, news of another departure from our staff in Legislative Services, which is really affecting the pace of which we work. So I think your comment is very considerate of the time. Any concern about that at this point, knowing Mr. Larmour will bring something back? Are there any other questions on any other item on unfinished business? Seeing none, that takes us to the committee of the whole open forum. I see our audience has left. Is there any comment from members of the media? Seeing none, back to you, Mr. Larmour?
Actually, I can just take that over.
Mr. Larmour, back to you.
Yes, Your Worship, Deputy Mayor for the closed session that we have tonight.
The council, the council meeting, closed session in accordance with Section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 regarding S239-2B Personnel Matters About An Identifiable Individual Including Municipal or Local Board Employees. First, one personnel matter.
All in favor? Carried?